You ready? All right, good morning, everyone. Thank you very much for being here. The date is Tuesday, February first, two thousand twenty-two. This is a regular time and place for a meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Due to issues arising from COVID nineteen, the board is using WebEx teleconferencing format for today's meeting and may be participating through the web. If you'd like to make any public comment, please use the, make sure that your name is identified in the WebEx system. For those interested in commenting during the unscheduled appearances, please use Raise the Hand feature as part of the platform and wait to be recognized and you will be allowed two minutes for your comments. Members in the audience who filled out speakers cards will be called up in the order that they were received by the clerk. And online speakers will be taken in order that they appear in the platform. So again, thank you very much for cooperating under those situations. Each vote today will be verbal or voice vote so that members of the public can hear how each board member has voted. So after we have a move in a second, we will take up the roll call vote. In order to establish a quorum, I'm going to now ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboon.
Here.
Craig Peterson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Here. Thank you very much. If I can ask you all to please rise now as we invite Jeff Gardner, Kings County Community Action, forward to deliver the invocation and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards.
Okay, as we can bow our heads, please. Thank you heavily, Father, for this day that you've given us. Thank you for the opportunities that you've bestowed us. And we seek your guidance and we seek your grace as we do the work of the public. And we ask you to come down upon us and show us how to be servant leaders and to help those who help, who need our help the most. And we ask you to be there with us through good times and bad times. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jeff. Now join me as we honor America by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time. On any item on the agenda or any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of this board, speakers will be limited to two minutes. Does the clerk have any record of anyone that would like to address the board under this time?
The, the board did receive a correspondence from Daisy De La Torre and all of the, all of you have copies. It will become part of the record. And I have a speaker card. The first speaker is Chris Gutierrez.
Morning, Chris.
Good morning, gentlemen. Thank you guys for having me this morning. I came this morning to go ahead and inform you guys. I'm speaking on behalf of the Kings County Firefighters Association, Local thirty-seven. But I came here to go ahead and inform you guys on how our citizens initiative is going to help increase our staffing levels for Kings County firefighters. Currently, we've been out for about four days gathering signatures at different locations, Walmart, Sepmart Foods, going all throughout Kings County. And we, we found that we are getting an overwhelming support of, of support from the community to sign this. Currently, right now, we have thirty-five hundred signatures for four days. And the community out here has just been amazing. People are lining up to sign. And we never thought we were going to see this. We thought it was going to be a hard battle, but everyone's lining up to sign. People are driving out of the way to sign. People are coming from the homes once they see us and they're signing. And we'll explain it so I'm not hiding anything from it, showing them and take pictures of it all. And we were just so impressed from the community, the support that we've been given. And we just want to inform you, gentlemen, where we're at. We need to get thirty-two hundred signatures to be able to turn it in. We're at thirty-five. And this is day four and we're going to continue to push till we're all out of paper until we can't talk no more. So I wanted to thank you, gentlemen. We guys that.
Good, thank you and good luck.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Bill Lynch.
Morning, Chief. Thank you for being here. Chairman, members of the board. Just wanted to update your board on the, the passing of an longtime employee with the Kings County Fire Department, Fire Captain Rick Hernandez passed away recently. He had thirty-plus years with the, with the agency, started with the City of Corcoran Fire Department and came over to Kings County in nineteen seventy-eight. So we, I don't know what the arrangements for the services are yet, but once we find that out, we'll let you, let you know, you and your board know if you want to attend. So thank you.
Good, appreciate it. Thanks, Chief.
The next speaker is Ulysses C.
Hello, good morning, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak. Good morning, Kings County. We're here today. My name is Luis Castellanos. I'm here with SCAU twenty fifteen. I'm here to convey a message from our IHSS providers throughout Kings County. We're here because we feel it's unfair that other IHSS workers in different counties are neighbors, like for example, in Tulare in Fresno, they're getting paid fifteen dollars and sixty cents, so they're above minimum wage. Plus, they have healthcare coverage in, in different counties like in Fresno. And IHSS providers feel it's unfair that we don't have those same benefits here. And we're very close, right? From Fresno, from Tulare. I also want to flag that other counties throughout California, smaller counties, have settled their IHSS contracts with fair levelable wages. And IHSS providers feel that Kings County is falling behind. So I just wanted to convey that message. You guys would also help elderly people in this community. I want to give you guys an example. We've heard that consumers have been left because IHSS workers are hearing that they could get paid better in Fresno and Tulare. They could get healthcare benefits over there. So please do it for those consumers, for those clients that are being left alone without no providers. Because IHSS providers rather go work at a different county for a better wage. So do it for the consumers, do it for that little old lady living, living in Avonel. Do it for, for that IHSS provider that can go look for another job because they're taking care of their moms, their dads. Do it for them. Do it for the, for the people that need it the most. So please hear us and please consider giving us something in our next contract negotiations, okay? IHSS providers would really appreciate that help. And how I said, these consumers would also benefit from, from that help. Okay? So thank you very much for your time.
Good, thank you.
The next speaker is Linda Irvin.
Good morning, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. My name's Linda Irvin and I work with the IHSS program. And I'm here to support other workers as myself. So I work hard for my money. I don't have no life, no health insurance. And that would really be good if we could do something like that. And I work for my disabled daughter. And I've been doing it for over a year or so now. And it's a really good program because if I wasn't there, working with her and helping my daughter, somebody else would be. But it, it benefits us all if we've got good health insurance, if we have better pay. Because on minimum wage with the cost of living today, it's really hard to make ends meet. But like I said, I'm here for support through that program and I really appreciate, appreciate your guys' time.
Good, thank you.
That is all the speaker cards that I have, and I do not see anybody with their hand raised online.
Okay, last call. Anyone in chambers like to address the board under unscheduled? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes of the meeting held on January twenty-fifth. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move.
Say.
Verboon.
Moved by Fagundes, seconded by Verboon. Additional discussion on the minutes. Here, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, the item stands approved, five in favor. The next item is the consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted by one motion. Request of any board member, any item may be removed and made part of the regular agenda. Have the board members had an opportunity to review the consent calendar?
Most of the move is presented.
Second.
Um, second. Okay, I get Verboon and Peterson, thank you very much. Additional discussion on the consent calendar. Here, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon. Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, the consent calendar stands approved, five in favor. Thank you very much. Moving to regular agenda items, first item comes from the Assessor Clerk Recorder, Chrissy Lee.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Christie Lee, Assessor Clerk Recorder. This morning, I'm bringing before you an agreement with Albert Ramsayer to represent the Assessor in litigation and future appeals pertaining to La Prino Foods Company. All attorneys in the county council's office with knowledge of assessment appeals and related litigation are conflicted at this time. As you'll recall, former, our former representation was with Diane Freeman. And now that she has been promoted to her appointment for the position of county counsel, she is now, she has a conflict of interest with representing our office in this case. We are asking for representation for all appeals matters in the court case number two zero C zero one five nine, La Prino Foods Company versus County of Kings. And the services will be billed on an as-needed basis at two hundred and eighty-five dollars per hour for Mr. Ramsayer's services and litigation costs. The costs of five hundred dollars or more will need approval prior to being paid. And the total costs are not to exceed twenty thousand dollars and will be paid out of contingencies. Therefore, an appropriation adjustment is needed. So we are requesting that you approve the agreement with Albert Ramsayer to represent my office and also to adopt, adopt the budget change.
Thank you, Chris Kelly. Questions or comments on the item? This is an action item. Chair will entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve that presented.
Moved by Verboon.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Seconded by Valley, thank you very much. Additional discussion on the motion? Here, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon. Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, that item stands approved, five in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item comes from Human Resources, considering discussion on the Emergency Services Manager and set the salary range. Good morning, Carolyn.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Carolyn Lees, Principal Personnel Analyst with the Human Resources Office. I'm here today to request approval of a new job specification and allocation of Emergency Services Manager for the Fire Department's Office of Emergency Management Division. This position is a management-level classification and will provide a program oversight and management to the disaster preparedness and emergency services programs of Kings County. Consistent with our other job specifications, this position does include a work environment and physical requirements to the position, as well as we are going to start now adding the disaster service worker information that you had also seen probably on this job specification. There is no impact to general fund with this recommendation. The annual salary and benefit expense for this position is one hundred and fourteen thousand fifty-one dollars. The cost for this new position for the remainder of this fiscal year is approximately thirty-eight thousand seventeen dollars. This position will be funded through the various state and federal grant funds in the Office of Emergency Management and if necessary, the Fire Fund as well. With that, we are recommending that the board approve the new job specification for Emergency Services Manager and set the salary range at two thirty-three point zero and allocate one point oh full-time equivalency position in budget unit two four three zero zero zero. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Good, thank you, Carolyn. Questions or comments? A move for adoption?
Yep, no question. Oh, I'll second that.
Moved by Peterson, seconded by Verboon, as presented by Carolyn. Any other discussion? Here, none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Let the record show, five in favor. Thank you very much. Next item comes from Public Works. In fact, we have two items. First item is to approve the amendment with the Kings County Community Action Organization. And Heather, good morning, thank you for being here.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Heather Silva with Public Health. So I'll go ahead and start with our first item. So Kings County has, has and continues to work tirelessly to meet the needs of the community by providing support to COVID-positive individuals and their families. The Kings County Department of Public Health continues to working to mitigate further impacts from the virus through continued testing, vaccination, and increased, increased depth of contact tracing and case investigation. The Kings Cares Program Support for Residents still being impacted remains critical at this time. The main goal of the Kings Cares Program continues to be to ensure compliance with isolation and quarantine processes necessary to slow the spread of COVID nineteen among the county's most vulnerable populations by keeping families as whole as possible. Kings Cares connects people to both short and long-term resources that can help build healthier families well beyond the current pandemic. Without appropriate support, a COVID diagnosis or quarantine order creates yet another seemingly overwhelming barrier after almost two years of hardships, loss, and severe financial strain. KCO has been administering this program since September of two thousand twenty twenty and has provide, has proven to be extremely successful in doing so. The COVID nineteen pandemic requires that this support be continued. At this time, this contract was first amended, at the time that this contract was first amended, Kings County had an average of less than ten cases a day. And KCDPH had hopes that this trend would continue. Since June of two thousand twenty-one, Kings County has experienced two separate COVID surges, with the Omicron surge still in effect and trending upward today. The department did not anticipate the significant rapid rise in cases and public needs spurred by the current surge when the initial five hundred thousand dollars was requested. And the original maximum amount was reached much sooner than we did expect. These services continue to help limit community transmission and avoid crisis points experienced during the past two years. A discontinuation of these services would put Kings County residents at unnecessary risk for further detrimental impacts for this virus affecting not only the essential workforce, but the broader community as well. Under the proposed contract amendment, Kings Community Action Organization will continue to provide financial and logistical support to individuals and household members who test positive for COVID nineteen seven days a week from eight AM to five PM each day. The two hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand increase requested in this amendment would be funded through the American Rescue Plan Act that was approved by the board in the Health Department budget on August seventeen, two thousand twenty-one. The total maximum amount will not exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand, which includes the five hundred thousand originally contracted for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year and the requested two hundred and fifty thousand in additional funds. In summary, the request for additional funding for the contract with KCO for the administration of the Kings Cares Program is in the best interest of the residents of Kings County to mitigate the impact of COVID nineteen on the essential workforce and other disproportionately impacted populations. The various types of services and support to be provided, KCO's experience running the program and a high success rate with current clients, as well as the nature of the COVID nineteen pandemic, all justify the request for additional funding. Our recommendation is for your board to approve the amendment with Kings Community Action Organization for Continued Administration of the Kings Cares Essential Workforce Support Program, extending the maximum compensation amount to seven hundred and fifty thousand. This concludes my report and I'm happy, happy to answer any questions you have. We also have Joey Cox and Jeff Garner with KCO here in the board chambers for, who is also available for questions.
Very good, thank you, Heather. Questions or comments for Heather? Supervisors, round.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just for clarification, first of all, I want to thank Ms. Chil for getting this on the agenda so quick. I understand that we, there's a request in for an update on a, a report out from KCO on the monies that were already spent, the two million dollars that were already spent. And, but instead of waiting for that report, which I hope comes soon, instead of waiting for that, I'm glad to see that this is on there today because this money needs to go out. The, the need is there and needs to get out there. So just, just for clarification though, Mr. Chair, the five hundred thousand dollars, because I was under the assumption today we were going to put out seven hundred and fifty thousand on the street. So the five hundred thousand that was already allocated, was that spent already? And?
Yes, so the five hundred thousand back in June, I think twenty-ninth of two thousand twenty-one, became and amended the, the initial contract, which included the two million to include five hundred thousand, because that two million is no longer.
So two point five million has been spent already?
The entire two million allotment was not spent, but we, we do have a breakdown. It's just we had a certain, I think it was up to the end of the fiscal year to be spent. And so I think it was one point seven, one point three. I'm not too sure, but I can get you those exact numbers. But because that funding was ending, my grant that I currently oversee, which is the ELC grant, we were able to allocate five hundred thousand to amend the contract through this fiscal year.
Okay.
But like we mentioned, we didn't anticipate that going.
No, no, thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, instead of me asking a bunch of questions, is it okay if KCO gets an opportunity to give a brief report out on the, on the program?
Yeah, Jeff or Joey? Whoever wants to tag team it?
No worries.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for being here.
No worries. I'm just, thank you for just allowing me this opportunity, actually. I'm just going to report out the report that I actually send to the Health Department every week. So from June through the end of January, we've served about eight hundred people. Hundred eleven agriculture workers, eighty individuals involved in food processing, forty-one in grocery delivery, one hundred and fifty-five healthcare workers, thirty public safety government service employees, ninety-four, twenty-seven in manufacturing, thirty in education, one hundred and forty-nine family members, a lot of children. We've seen quite a few kids and that, that seems to be increasing. And then we're also serving people in certain census tracts. So we have served one person in Avonel who, just for the fact that they live there but were not employed, ten people in Corcoran. And then there are a hundred and seven other individuals identified by the state of California as essential that we've also served. You know, male, female, primarily females have been served, five hundred and fifty-six versus two eighty-nine for males. Hundred and forty-eight children, three hundred and eighty-five individuals, nineteen to thirty-nine, two hundred and ninety-four, forty to sixty-four, and twenty-six, sixty-five and older. Primarily single, four hundred and eighteen, three hundred and seventy married. And that pretty much sums it up. We have utilized a lot of KCO services to kind of advertise or market this project. We used our food delivery, or sorry, food distribution programs, outreach events that we participate in and so on. So we've really tried to put this out there, but like Heather said, we did not expect this surge starting in December and through January. It's just been crazy.
Mr. Chairman, I'll put my, direct my questions through the chair. So through the chair, the, can you just tell us what your biggest challenge was? Because, you know, there, not everything, all the comments about the program through KCO has been positive, but hey, shouldn't expect it to be. None of us have been through a pandemic like this, right? The board, we haven't done everything perfect, so I'm not, I don't want to appear that I'm being hard on you. So just in general, obviously, you've had some challenges, some, some people have been turned away. I think we've all received questions on the program and, and some, you know, not all positive comments in, in the community dealing with these. So what would you just say is your, has been the biggest challenge so far? How could we help, meaning once, once you receive this money, which I hope you get this money today, that we could get it out there and do better? What would you say would be your biggest challenge? Has.
For us right now, the, the biggest challenge has one been the surge. And the fact that it's, it's been very difficult onboarding individuals, you know, to KCO. Currently, we have three individuals working in this program, serving every single client that comes in. So we are, are, that's probably the biggest challenge.
So being overwhelmed?
Being overwhelmed all at once, yes. And so that's challenge one. Challenge two are, you know, people do want us to help them, but you know, we are trying to honor the contract and it's for essential workers. So, you know, we have individuals who, who call in and they're unemployed, they haven't worked. Yes, they have COVID and, but unfortunately, we can't serve them. It's for essential workers. That's what this project is for.
I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Chairman. So, but some people have been working and they get turned down for if they work at a gym or?
There, there are certain jobs that are not considered essential. Working at a gymnasium is not considered essential.
Okay. See, and I'm glad you brought that up because one thing I wanted to ask the board to discuss was if there's a way, you know, I know when we started off, it was quote, essential workers, not essential, but I think a lot of that is left. If there's a way where we could loosen that up, meaning if someone is calling them and they see raising it, if someone is calling them, if they're from Kings County, if they have a positive test, they're calling for a reason. I'm sure they don't want to be in a position to call you, but if they're calling and they're from here, whether they're a minimum wage worker or a multimillionaire, if they're calling and they say, I got this positive test from KCO, I mean, from Kings Health Department, my family and I need help, I would like to see them at this point in the pandemic, get that money. And I don't know that's legal, or if the board has that appetite to loosen that up a little bit and cut down on the timing, because those questions take up a lot of your staff time too, right? To screen someone and then let them know, then you got to communicate back with them you're not qualified. Can we talk about that, Mr. Chair?
Who set up the criteria? Set up.
So I can speak on behalf of that. I know Ed had his hand raised as well. He was with us during the time that this contract was brought forth. So in the beginning, the initial two million dollars was a lot more lenient on the types of stuff that can be spent. ELC funding is a lot more strict. So I do want to clarify that this two hundred and fifty thousand, we don't anticipate getting us through the end of this contract. We will be back with an additional contract amendment. This was just to keep services going at this time. But during that contract amendment, we will be going through like what, the what's allowable matrix, who's qualified and who doesn't. But again, it really depends on the restrictions of that funding source at that time. And I think Ed.
Yeah, I'm just going to reinforce what Ms. Silva said. You know, the CARES Act funding, which was the original funding source for this, was less restrictive. Those funds expired due to timelines, as well as, you know, the surge had kind of tapered off, so the need wasn't there. As Ms. Silva mentioned, those funds weren't completely exhausted for this program. Then we switched to ELC, which is much more restrictive, which also caused confusion in the criteria, because CARES Act allowed for wage replacement, ELC does not. CDPH constantly changes what's allowable under ELC. There are other funding streams that are available that are less restrictive. ARPA is one of those, which we're going to talk about later on today, so that is an option.
It is an option.
Yeah. So those, those options do exist and they're at the pleasure of your board.
Mr. Chair, is that something you want to do today or come back?
It'd be a different funding project. So if you want to stay with where we're at right now, and then we can always expand that discussion later on.
Okay. My last point, Mr. Chairman, to bring up and, and then move on is, okay, so we're, we're hearing that, that they were overwhelmed, that's taking up a lot of their staff time. They're serving the entire population of Kings County. And so my question was what other agencies are already out there to, that could work hand in hand with KCO to lighten the load up, decrease your overhead and get more of this money out into the families' pockets, right? Because that was always an issue I had last year, but I don't want to go backwards, be negative, moving forward, okay? New year. And, Mr. Chairman, you know, the senior population, which has been affected, especially in the surge, and I, I'm pretty sure data would back that up, that there is a need in the senior population. And, you know, when you think of them, you think about Kings Commission on Aging, and I think we gave them forty thousand dollars last year. And I've heard nothing but positives out of the food delivery. And I've heard nothing but positives out of the food delivery under COVID through there. So I was wondering if anyone was on the line, because that would be a good discussion to have, meaning not only give KCAO $250,000 today, but maybe even 100, 150,000 to another agency, split the population, split the workload. Aging's already working the senior population. Why should we have those folks calling KCAO as well and adding to their workload? So yes, I would like to see them be funded, carry on with the program, but that we do it better going into this year, I think we have an opportunity there. There was interest from the Commission on Aging as well and from the Board of Supervisors.
And that discussion should take place in the study session, not for this item today right now.
Okay.
I do want to add that if there's any consideration of amending the agreement in scope or, you know, that it would have to be agreed to by both parties, which would mean that we'd have to take it away, you know, have those discussions come back with an amended agreement for consideration.
Unless we just fund the 250 today and then talk about in the study session on how to move forward?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, because the item on the floor discussion right now is for the essential workforce support.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Peterson?
Yes, sir. Just had a question with respect to, I didn't receive any phone calls or things that, you know, folks weren't being provided the service, but with respect to the comment of being overwhelmed and, you know, I'm just curious, in your estimation, if you were to assess with a percentage level of what percentage of people contacted you for service and didn't meet the qualifications?
Out of the 800 referrals that we have received, only 45 actually declined services. So total.
Right, so I just...
As far as not eligible, I would guess less than probably 3%.
Okay.
It's very low.
Yeah.
It's very low. And just to go back to challenges also, you know, your district, Avenel, Corcoran, that area, you know, they are very limited in other services, I mean, things like food delivery, that sort of thing. So, you know, we get clients from Avenel or Corcoran, we have to actually order food, have it delivered to us, and we have to have staff actually physically deliver it to them. So, which is also... So, which, we get it done, but it may not be as quickly as some of the residents want it to be. But it's a process and we're at the mercy of programs like Instacart. You know, if they say they're going to be there at 11 and they don't get their choice free, then, you know, we deliver after 3. So it's those things, Joe.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the comments. I mean, I just, the effectiveness of the programs and the amount of funding that we have, I think, are critical. You know, the percentage of people that, you know, maybe don't meet the application or applicant, the restrictions that are laid out in this program, I just don't want to, you know, jump off a limb and make bellwether changes to a program that has been effective. It appears that there's minimal, you know, when you look, I mean, if there's one person, we want to try and help them, right? But to completely, you know, overturn a program that has been effective throughout COVID and obviously the surge is what it is, but I just got to be cautious about how we, you know, we move a bunch of money into one program and now we're shorting another program. And so, thank you for your comments and your information. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Supervisor Verboon?
I have a second motion for approval presented.
Moved by Verboon, seconded by Fagundes. Additional discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please call the rule?
Joan Eves?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Let the record show that item stands approved. Five in favor. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jeff.
Mr. Chairman, could I just ask that, once they get their audit in of the 2.5, that we get that emailed to us? I think we need to look at that before we declare any program effective. It's a lot of money out there.
Right. Well, we'll ensure that happens, Supervisor Val.
We do have staff currently working with them, and that's why we anticipate coming back with another amendment to get us through this fiscal year at least. But I do want to thank Joey and Jeff and Glenda as well, who's online, but this has been a very, we do hear some complaints and there's always those hiccups with these new programs. The complaints have been a lot less than what we were receiving in the beginning, so that is a very good, very good thing to see, as well as the staffing shortages as well that we're all experiencing, and OKCAO is also. So I do thank you guys for pushing through the surge and continuing. I'll mention later in the COVID report, like, our highest cases to date right now is 886 cases in one single day. So that's a lot of referrals, that's a lot of self-referrals that will be pushed over to KCAO. So I do want to thank you guys for all of your hard work and hopefully we can get this thing moving and serving other populations like the elderly and stuff like that.
No, appreciate that. Yeah, and you ought to try to put up with my wife after ordering stuff through Walmart. Not a pretty sight. With that, Heather, would you like to continue on the update on the COVID?
Sure. So as we mentioned, the cases, I'll start with that for our COVID update. We continue to see a rise in cases over the past three weeks. January 24 through the 30th, we had a total of 3,171 community cases. That's about 300 additional since the last prior week before that. We're at an average of 453 cases a day, reaching our highest daily case count of 886 cases reported in one single day to us. And that does not include the at-home COVID positive tests as well. The highest increase in percentage of cases has been among the 0 to 11 age group, with at least a 3% increase in cases in the past two weeks. This number is expected to further increase as test results from the last seven days are still coming in, with the 65 and older population seeing a slight increase as well. The Health Department continues to issue isolation and quarantine orders through our website. This helps all positive cases in Kings County to have guidance readily available from the time that they find out they're positive. We continue to focus on patients at highest risk for severe disease, who we continue to contact as those test results come in. Omicron is currently the dominant variant in Kings County, making up 68% of the specimen sequence so far for the month of January. The BA.2 variant, which is a mutation of the Omicron, is still being monitored, but is not listed as a variant of concern at this time. And at this time, Kings County has not identified any of those types of variants so far. Aventus Health is working on shifting mobile unit services to offering the monoclonal antibody, SOTRO, in the coming weeks, and we hope to bring a contract extension to your board next week to continue to support those services. Unlike the previous monoclonal being used on the mobile, SOTRO can only be administered via IV, requiring a different level of expertise and care and administration. So available staff are undergoing training and supplies are being updated. Availability of the SOTRO product has been extremely limited, so we mutually agreed with Aventus Health that ensuring a relatively steady stream of product availability was important before, again, offering this treatment through the mobile unit. Before the switch, the unit had served approximately 90 patients with the monoclonal antibody treatment, and additional providers are listed on our website. As of January 31, the local hospital had 53 patients in med surg and four in the ICU. Of those admitted, 40 are Kings County residents. We are seeing an increase in COVID hospitalizations. We have seen an increase in COVID hospitalizations in Kings County, which is causing more strain on our healthcare system, including our local hospital. At this time, there have been no additional staff requested by Aventus Health. Unvaccinated patients continue to make up the majority of hospitalized patients, which remains at 83% since the start of the surge. We do know that Omicron is more likely to infect vaccinated individuals than Delta. However, the vaccine still offers excellent protection against severe disease, hospitalization, and death. This is especially true for those who have received their booster, so we encourage those who have not yet done so to take that extra step. Our PPE status has not changed. We are still maintaining a 60-day supply of PPE for our healthcare facilities. Last week, Public Health collected 4,857 COVID tests, which is a slight decrease from the week prior, but the demand continues to remain the highest that we've seen with any past surge. The iHealth at-home kits continue to be distributed to everyone who receives a PCR test at our Hamfret site, our mobile testing unit, and in our Corcoran clinic on Sundays. The small additional shipment we received at the end of last week will allow us to continue to provide kits to the public while supplies last, as well as providing some relief to the daycares and businesses who are going through, who are experiencing outbreaks. Those supplies remain limited, and again, we have no word on when additional kits may come in. The supply that we do have is expected to run out next week, and we have no word yet on additional shipments. Though we continue to request more as we request more as they become available. Turnaround times have shown signs of improvement in the past week, which we're now seeing results come back in two to three days, with the reminder that this can change at any time, depending on the volume of tests the state lab is seeing each day. It continues to be vital that we offer those at-home kits to as many people as possible so they can isolate and notify contacts right away, which was part of the expectation when we received those kits. Last week, January 24 through the 30th, Public Health administered 477 vaccines, which is a slight decrease from the week prior. This is the second week in a row that we've seen a fairly significant decline in vaccine demand. As of today, we have 9,648 partially vaccinated residents and 65,788 fully vaccinated residents, which is 50% of our eligible population, not including the prison inmates. Our current breakthrough rate stands at 8%. As mentioned, this is expected with Omicron, as we know it is more likely to infect those who have been vaccinated, but we have only seen a slight increase in the percentage of hospitalized patients that have been vaccinated. And this is where the vaccines remain most effective. If you get COVID as a fully vaccinated individual, you are significantly less likely to end up with severe disease, and with a booster, that risk drops even further. 36% of our fully vaccinated population in Kings County have received their booster shot, which is great progress. We hope to see demand for boosters continue in the coming weeks. Yesterday, January 31, the FDA approved fully, the FDA fully approved the Moderna COVID-19 vaccine for ages 18 and older. The approved vaccine will be marketed as Spike Vax. As a reminder, the Moderna vaccine still has emergency youth authorization for individuals 16 and 17 years old, and the Pfizer vaccine is fully approved for ages 16 and plus with emergency youth authorization for ages 5 through 15. We know that even with the threat of new variants in the horizon, we have the tools to help our community through these surges. We know the vaccine and booster doses reduce the impact of the virus and prevent hospitalizations. Keeping distance from others and using other methods of protection are key to preventing the spread to others, especially those with weakened immune systems or those that aren't able to receive the vaccine. Continuing to mask with surgical masks and K-95s if around others protects you and those around you. Reaching out to King's Cares for support, staying home when sick and testing often will help all of us move forward stronger and more prepared. This concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Appreciate it, Heather. Thank you very much for all of the big numbers. Are there questions or comments for Heather?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just like to say thank you to the health staff, you know, watch from afar with the testing facilities and the line that's over there, and they work diligently to get through that. You know, by the afternoon, it's very limited and, you know, basically walk up and get a test. It's an amazing effort, as well as, you know, the efforts to get more boosters. My wife and I went two weeks ago and we walked up and walked right in and we were done in half an hour, so it's easy, it's fast and efficient. And I just want to thank your department for staying on top of it. Appreciate it.
That's great to hear. Thank you. And yes, I would like to also thank our staff. They have worked every day. We're open seven days a week doing either testing or vaccines in the cold and the heat and the rain, so I'm glad your experience was great. And we continue to provide that experience and that availability to all of Kings County, so.
Yeah, it's good to get there in the morning. That way the needles are still sharp. Sometimes, yeah.
Wait, they use a needle?
Sometime. Oh, you didn't use that part?
Oh, sick.
Yeah. When the previous cell director was over there, he used to spend the evening sharpening those needles to use them. Any other discussion, Supervisor Val?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, thanks for the, I saw the way you guys took the report last week and put it on the website. That was helpful. So taking notes, can't hear, I miss half of what you say, and that's good information. So I'll just wait till I see that get put out later on.
Yeah, we'll continue, and we kind of form it a little bit easier to read as well. I'm a fast talker. Darcy does this much better than I do.
Oh, you did get it.
So that report will continue to be updated on our website.
Thank you. I think people were, even last week, I took some of your data on the average case count from last week, which was, I can't remember, 4...
412, I believe.
Or something. People were still surprised at that, at how large that was for that time period. But, so no, thanks for putting that information out. And will you be sticking around for the study session? Because I'd like to hear more about home test kits through ARPA funds. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And the Health Department continues a variety of services, not just COVID, but also the seasonal flu and all of the other necessary immunizations for students and people wanting to get passports. And so those actions continue on top of the workload that the pandemic has added.
Yes.
Certainly want to extend our thanks.
Yes, thank you, guys.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Heather, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the action items of the...
Chairman, would you like me to give my report for the county staff?
Do you want to?
No.
Do you have any good numbers? Or, you know, Heather's numbers were pretty big, and you, you want to talk about that?
Unfortunately, those continue to increase for us as well.
That's what I was afraid of.
Since the last surge began, we are now at 291, with approximately 60 individuals teleworking or in quarantine. In addition to that, I wanted to announce that on the 25th, the governor announced a, an agreement to extend or bring back the supplemental paid sick leave for employees. That process is still taking shape. What we know so far is they've updated the definition, fully vaccinated to include the boosters. They've also included vaccine coverage so that if you get vaccinated, the supplemental sick leave can possibly cover that time away from the symptoms. It's, as mentioned before, it's still taking shape. We'll hopefully know more at the end of this week, but we do anticipate that coming either at the end of this week or early next week.
Good. Thank you for the update. And then, you know, that disruption in service extends to other organizations as well. I know, yesterday, we had to suspend the trip to Fresno, which are totally medical, going to Veterans Hospital, Children's Hospital, and some of the specialty services that are in that Fresno area, and due to the lack of drivers, just had to suspend that route. King's Waste and Recycling continues to be impacted by employees that are not able to be on-site because of quarantines or other reasons. So I think between the Fire Department, the Sheriff's Department, I haven't heard too much about the ambulance, but I know all of the, you know, public protection agencies have been impacted at one time or another. So. Very good. Thank you for that update, and hopefully we have hit the plateau and hopefully going to start seeing some decline.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Yeah. With that, okay, that concludes all the action items of the morning, and so if your first name isn't Dominic, now you don't have to, Domingo? Yeah. First study session regarding the review of the state and federal legislative platform. Good morning, sir. Thank you for being here.
Sir. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning. Domingo Cruz, and with me is my colleague there, Matthew Boyet, both of your administrative analysts at the Administrative Office. So he and I will tag team in presenting the study session this morning. So the study session is centered at Kings County 2022 State and Federal Legislative Platform. These topics have immediate and lasting impacts to the county. As part of the process, staff met with department heads on November 29 and 30 of 2021 to get a better understanding of their legislative updates and requests. Staff is seeking feedback today from your board on the many efforts and actions listed within the proposed 2022 legislative platform. So with the continued challenges of COVID-19, many of the legislative priorities are carryovers from the previous year. All or most of the department heads and our state and federal legislative advocates, the Chriscom Company and the Paragon government regulations are in the line also. So for the remaining of the presentation, we will give some of the highlights for each slide. So these are the recommended priorities for 2022. We are still in a COVID-19 response posture, and it has its own unique challenges. Water is very poor in Kings County and to the valley as we have experienced drought in the last few years. One thing that resonated during our meetings with the departments for this year is a concern of possible unfunded mandates to the county as our revenue streams may not be able to keep up with them. We will do our best to oppose them before they get started. We will do our best to oppose them before they get started. It is proposed to continue COVID-19 response is as a high priority. So the local health departments continue to be on the front lines to ensure adequate testing, contact tracing, isolation and quarantine capacity, instituting measures to protect the communities and availability of vaccines. We advocate for the local health departments to be provided sufficient funding to carry out these responsibilities and to rebuild and strengthen the public health infrastructure across California to be better prepared to meet the future challenges. Advocate in finding solution for dealing with water shortages, streamlining the permitting process for storage projects, replenishment of depleted groundwater aquifers, adaptive management of the Delta Pumping, and the reestablishment of the Williamson Act Subvention. Advocate for maintaining sufficient health realignment funding, development of statewide health information exchange system, seek the protection against increased county program costs for the California Children's Services Program, and oppose new mandates without specified stable and adequate funding commitments. And finally, support in maintaining existing regulations and the oversight of pre-hospital emergency medical services.
All right, so moving on to the behavioral health side. Want to enhance board and care rates to help, you know, keep those infrastructures in place and growing, as well as fund pre-trial mental health diversion. So we need to close the revolving door, so to speak, in the criminal justice system with those with subliminal illnesses. Support policies that reduce the health disparities and inequities in our communities, as well as increased support and legislation to enhance the suicide prevention measures here in the county. And then moving on to the human services side, just overall advocating for increased funding for all the human services, services, and more importantly with that, in the foster care and child welfare services realm. So very important there. And then lastly, on that side, I want to support the overhaul of the way homeless funding allocations are brought down to go ahead and support those infrastructures throughout the state. And then moving on to the public safety side with the sheriff, we want to support, you know, providing resources and funding for the following. So local gang prevention and enforcement activities, as well as court security. So, you know, bolstering the staffing in the court security there, as well as inpatient psychiatric care for, you know, mental health accessibility. And then on the DA side, actually support the increase in funding opportunities for the following. We have the Family Justice Center there, you know, establishing that here within the county, as well as mental health and drug diversion. And then lastly, just overall funding for the prosecution and defense of criminal cases and overall administration of those cases. Sticking with public safety here, we have the fire, the fire department here. We want to go ahead and support growth funding for increased staffing and addressing critical infrastructure needs as the county grows. We want to be able to grow with it, as well as support any new regulation in regards to solar battery storage, or better known as solar farms, as they pose potential hazmat and fire risks. And then moving on to inmate detentions, I want to support legislation that actually extends the eligibility of Medi-Cal for the inmates, and also mitigate various risks, risk exposures for our inmates as well. And then lastly, we want to go ahead and support maximizing funding for medical and mental health care for inmates and overall inmate support.
Last and safety, support funding for adult parole, the best practice in eliminating disparities, stronger reenter programs and supporting continuums of care that keep youth from entering or re-entering into the justice system. Moving on to the general services, continue to support the issuance of clarifying language to the recently passed Proposition 19, which is the home protection for seniors, severely disabled families and victims of wildfire or natural disasters act. Oppose the filing period extension as it relates to business property and ag property, and also oppose the extension with solar tax exclusions. For the child support, provide funding that will allow the Child Support Services Program to reach unserved families, remove barriers, the expansion of sharing of information and data between agencies. Support any legislation that increases water in Kings County, direct allocation of community development block grant, the CDBG funds, and home investment partnerships program, home funds, and funding efforts in updating the increasingly complex general plan requirements.
All right, moving on to the county clerk. As Don mentioned earlier, I want to go ahead and oppose any new unfunded mandates by the state. And then in the economic development and job training realm there, want to go ahead and support efforts to actually recruit healthcare workers to the area to help address what we're currently going through, as well as the development of an equivalent program to what we had previously with the enterprise zones to help, you know, promote growth in the disadvantaged communities in the county, as well as legislation funding programs that would actually increase job training opportunities within the county. And moving on to the library, just generally seeking measures and support for the infrastructure needs, as well as advocate to secure funding for the governor's California Comeback Plan Infrastructure Program. So there's a potential there for about $10 million for the county for the library infrastructure. And then moving on to public guardian, support increased spending on public guardian programs overall. And then shifting down to Public Works, support state investments into diversion programs to actually assist the unfunded mandates. So one that's going to be coming down here is the SB 1383 Organics Waste and Recycling Program that we're going to be facing. And then moving on to transportation, explore road user change policy options. So as the gas excise tax diminishes due to more efficient vehicles, we want to explore other funding options, as well as protect state transportation funding and promote streamlined and flexibility within that funding. And then general support for state Route 198 due to safety concerns, and actually elevate that to the state's strategic plan and put it on their radar, as well as state funding for widening state Route 33, 41, and 43 improvements here within the county. And then moving on to veteran services, support legislation that would focus on getting homeless veterans off the streets and into some sort of housing, as well as mental health treatment for those veterans, and then expanding the veterans' treatments courts that we have going on. And then moving on to the administrative side, we have our capital projects. So we want to go ahead and support efforts that would actually reduce the voter approval requirements from the, you know, super majority of the two-thirds to a 55%. So that way we can get to structure bonds and public safety tax increases as necessary. As you know, in 2016, we had our public safety tax measure fail with those strict requirements in place. And then moving on to the county council area, support any future relief legislation coming directly from the federal government to the county, actually bypassing the state, and then address issues of local, local concern related to tort reform, which is actually consistent with CSAC's policy within its county platform. And then moving on to, to elections. It's not on there yet, but there it goes. Oh. A delay. Pick up in the IT there. There it goes. Elections, we want to go ahead and support any election funding to actually meet any of the mandates brought by the state, as well as looking to reduce the number of voting days from 11 down to four. And then on the finance side, want to go ahead and oppose legislation that would place any unfunded mandates upon the county, popular, as well as oppose any deferred payments from the state to the county. And with that, finance, I want to, wants to go ahead and support legislation that actually ensures that taxes and fees collected in the state highway account are actually used to repair the roadway infrastructure and not used for any other unintended, unintended purposes. And then moving down to the high-speed rail area, want to continue working with the High Speed Rail Authority to construct and deploy all of the projects within the county, as well as support some financial accountability for such projects, as well as continue to advocate for a maintenance facility here in the area. So there we go.
So moving on to human resources, support the continued clarification of labor laws and leave laws, Cal-OSHA protocols, and also support funding source to implement new mandated training for diversity, equity, and inclusiveness. For the information technology, support the increase of broadband accessibility to lower income residents and the adjustment of the current definition of high speed. And amend government code section 26202.6, which governs the retention of video recordings that are made for routine monitoring purposes to only retain 60 to 90 days versus one year. So we're now moving into the 2022 federal legislative priorities. And the first one is COVID-19 pandemic public health response. Kings County supports increased funding for public health programs and initiative to address the evolving impacts of COVID-19 and to continue building local public health capacity, reliable funding for additional ongoing resources and preparedness for a prompt, coordinated, and comprehensive response to a new and reemerging infectious diseases. For the California drought resiliency, the county supports long-term, meaningful solutions to California's complex water management challenges, including legislative proposals and regulatory actions that would ensure more reliable and predictable water delivery to our communities in the Central Valley. Specifically, Kings County supports re-authorizing the 2016 water infrastructure improvements for the Nation Act, which expired in 2021.
All right, keeping with the water theme here, want to actually support efforts to enhance the existing surface water storage facility, as well as construct new ones, as well as amend the Endangered Species Act and other environmental laws. And we also want to protect the county's supply of surface and groundwater and actually improve the county regional economic and agriculture opportunities there. I also want to help, more importantly here, disadvantaged communities access safe, reliable drinking water in their areas. And then moving on to the feet-to-trust reform in Indian gaming. The county supports federal legislation that would incentivize counties and tribes to enter into judicially enforceable agreements when tribes are permitted to engage in economic development activities, which include Indian gaming. So we want to, and these are going to actually mitigate the local impacts of such gaming activities in the areas. And then moving on to the public safety side, want to support legislation that actually ensures that federal and state immigration compliance incompatibilities do not actually impact the funding to our agencies, as well as support legislation that actually addresses drug and narcotics problems, which includes tougher penalties for illegal drug-related crimes, as well as community-oriented policing services or cops for schools in our rural communities and higher federal, fire, excuse me, higher federal fines and prison sentences for the ever-increasing mail theft going on.
Moving on to the telecommunications, interoperability, broadband, and human services. The county supports funding for first responder infrastructure upgrades and or repair. Likewise, Kings County supports funding for the U.S. Department of Agriculture to provide reliable and affordable high-speed internet, e-connectivity, and the deployment and availability of emerging technologies such as small cells, 5G to rural areas. Kings County supports federal Title IV E, federal payments for foster care reform, amendments to the Family First Prevention Services Act, oppose efforts to reduce or block grant federal funding for Medicaid, medical administration of, or benefits, and support federal homelessness services legislation.
And moving on for child support services, I want to support family financial sustainability by becoming a social safety net for the families through the various program funding and services in that department. And then on, and on the health and behavioral health side, want to go ahead and support addressing the prevention of chronic disease and promotion of overall wellness, as well as oppose a reduction or diversion of state and federal funding streams. For example, the Prevention and Public Health Fund, you know, shifting any additional cost down to local departments. And then on the military and veterans code side, supporting legislation that would provide increased access for the county veteran service offices to veteran affairs information systems, so we can better access that information and serve the veterans, as well as legislative changes that would reduce the backlog there at the VA and actually expand the outreach for such services.
For the community development, the county supports maximum funding, funding and flexible use for the community development block grant CDBG program. Kings County supports legislation and our administrative action that would expand eligibility requirements for USDA's Rural Development Communities Facilities Programs, full funding for Local Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act programs, the restoration of the Highway Trust Funds solvency, ensuring set-asides for smaller metropolitan areas and rural areas as part of major programs and small projects, and the elimination of new non-federal revenue requirements or programs that rely in a substantial local match.
And then moving on to the tactic, tax exempt bond side. County is going to support efforts to protect the municipal and the private activity bonds, the PABs, exemptions, as well as legislation that would restore the exemptions for advanced refunding bonds. And then for the Institute of Museum and Library Services, supporting the continuation of federal grants and various funding, for example, the Library Services Technology Act. Also want to maintain robust funding of technology needs through the E-Rate Program, as well as funding and repair and construct modern library facilities in the various underserved and disadvantaged communities here in the county. And then on the nutrition assistance side, supporting efforts to improve the food security and augmented federal investments in the SNAP program or the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. And then lastly, on the affordable childcare side, supporting legislation that increases access to the Head Start Program and affordable, high-quality childcare and learning programs.
So with all that, thank you to all the department heads in assisting us putting the legislative priorities together for this year. I think we went over that quick. So if you have any questions at all, as mentioned earlier, some or all of the department heads are online, and also our state and federal advocates are also online. Thank you.
You're good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Questions? Supervisor Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With respect to our federal legislative policies underwater, just want to make one addition or make sure that it's included in this process, and that is the new proposed rule on WOTUS, Waters of the U.S. The new, the new rule would greatly expand the federal government's regulatory reach over private land use because it allows it to regulate ditches, ephemeral drainages, and low spots on farmlands and pastures, as well as any county property. So, you know, if you think back to the federal wetlands policies that were developed and the overreach that occurred there, I mean, you could have a natural pasture where you had cattle grazing, a low spot where cattle move around a fence. All of a sudden, that gets a determination that it's a wetland. This creates the same scenario. It puts the county at risk. It puts every landowner at risk. There is no nexus between waters, a navigable water and this policy, and I would hope that we would oppose it. I just throw that out as an addition to our water policy.
You're very good. Thank you.
So that was an add-on of language into this, or you opposed something that was written in the?
This is the new proposed rule that is being proposed by the administration.
Okay, so you want additional language added to our platform?
Well, yes. Okay, that would oppose, you know, this, yeah. The current, you know, the current, I don't know what you want to call it, the, the name of the, the current program is, is navigable waters of, navigable waters protection rule, and they, they are proposing to amend that. But there's a whole bunch of policy that comes with it, and I think it would be pertinent for us to. I think it would be pertinent for us to, uh, make sure, because it exposes the county and every other landowner in our county to this.
Too, well.
Yep.
They'll come in and take your water from you because of the reasons behind it, that they don't think it's right. So support us on our radar and we keep, uh, pressure on it either way.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank staff, um, for this, getting all this information together. Again, I know this is an annual mission. That's a big deal for you guys. I know Chris Comm was on the ground, right? They came, they helped out again this year, so we appreciate our, um, our county lobbying firm to be a part of this, and then, um, watch them go to work, uh, throughout the year again on these. And Mr. Chair, could I just, um, ask if, uh, uh, Loopy, uh, Villa, um, if he's on Webex, if he could talk a little bit about, um, the elections office priority and I, I, I don't know if I'm have concern or not. I, I need to, um, learn a little bit more from him on what this is about here.
Loopy, are you, uh, online? If you are, you're still muted.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chair, as he's listening, it's the, this, the sentence that caught me is, um, support and effort to reduce the number of voting days from eleven to four. And I, I want to know more about what effort we're, we're looking to support, whose effort is it, um, where we're at, if it's good, if it's good for the county, Kings.
Good morning. I'm Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Can you guys hear me now?
Yep. Yeah. Thanks.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we do.
Yep. Okay. All right. Mr. Mr. Vaya, what was, uh, what was the question?
Um, under, uh, elections office on the, um, printout that the board has, the second sentence where it says, support an effort to reduce the number of voting days from eleven to four, um, can, can you talk about why that's a priority and, um, why that's better for Kings County and for not only Kings County, but for every race, uh, party affiliation, uh, culture of every voter in the counter, in, in the county? Can you tell me why that's better for them?
Sure, sure. Um, thank you for the, uh, the question. Um, it's, it's a bit premature to, to have stated that due to the fact that I'll be presenting to the board next week regarding Board of Choice Act. Uh, currently, AB four fifty, which is what enacted the Board of Choice Act, allows for eleven days of voting. That's ten days of early voting plus one day, which is election day. Uh, in the last two elections we held here in Kings County, the November twenty twenty general election and the September fourteen gubernatorial recall election, we deployed what we called the VCA-like model, which is a, a smaller model than that of, uh, AB four fifty VCA model. Uh, most recently, there was, um, there was legislation trying to be passed, uh, federal and at federal level that allowed for fifteen days of voting. Uh, I myself, Kings County, and along with several other counties throughout the state has, has and will continue to bring to the attention of the Secretary of State and legislation that having eleven days of voting in the small county is not, uh, beneficial, is not cost-effective. However, that's how the legislation was written. So any county that is VCA, currently VCA, is, it's required to have eleven days of voting, um, for ten days. Uh, it's going to be two vote centers for ten days, and then at the four-day mark, the other centers will open up. And I'll explain that further, uh, next week. Uh, but data doesn't support having a center open for eleven days. It just doesn't support it. I mean, um, last September, we had one vote in Avanale in two days. Um, so to justify the need for a center is very difficult. However, I do support the fact that we should be out there providing or being, uh, available for four days, not for eleven days. So the, the, the slide or the information that was presented to you this morning, it's in regards to supporting legislation that will reduce or allow the counties such as Kings to deploy a, an election model that is beneficial to our community. And I can tell you that we have not done the eleven-day, uh, centers yet. I'm hoping to get your support next week and that of your colleagues. But I can tell you that the four-day was well embraced by the community. Um, it, it, it was beneficial for all races, all political affiliations. I mean, everybody had the opportunity to vote and vote early, uh, having three days of early voting plus the day of election. Um, having eleven days is going to be a challenge for us, uh, but I'm still driving forward, trying to implement that in Kings County. Uh, now you have counties such as LA. LA County wanted to expand from eleven days to eighteen days or so because they, they need that many days. We don't in Kings County. We just don't have, uh, the number of voters or the activity to justify so many days of early voting. That is why I, I asked to, you know, for support in regards to any legislation that would allow counties, uh, to deploy or employ a model that is beneficial to the county. In other words, let us be, uh, be flexible, allow flexibility to the county, and let us make the decision on what type of model we should deploy.
No, thank, thank you for that background. So I wanted to make sure that we weren't being reduced. So, and we were already at four. I know, um, just in memory, uh, uh, the last two, uh, elections in Kings County, we had, um, high turnout. If you go so to site Avanale, since you brought them up, where you had one in-person voter walk in, then I would assume, um, you had, um, a, a high percentage of ballots that were dropped off at the, um, these new, uh, lock drop boxes that we have, or, um, mail-in ballots?
Yeah. So our goal, yes, we did. And, and I have specific numbers that I can share with you guys, but we, we, the, the activity is, is pretty much a given. It's a Saturday and Sunday that were the, the first two days of early voting. Um, a lot of folks don't want to come out during those days. Now, moving forward to the Tuesday of Election Day, we were busy. So people still come out on Election Day, and even on that Monday, you know, but it's, it's not just in Kings County that data is reflecting a very low percentage of people coming out. It's throughout. I mean, Sacramento was led the lead on, on trying to get the legislative change to allow us for flexibility, because they have very low turnout during those two days. Uh, so expanding it to eleven days throughout or fifteen days throughout, it just doesn't make any sense. Uh, but again, you know, we're, we're asking, uh, for the support for any type of legislation that would allow counties the flexibility needed to deploy a model that is beneficial to their community. And I can assure you that Kings County will benefit from having VCA, uh, four days of early voting, or three days of early voting plus election day. Now, uh, Assembly Bill thirty-seven just changed that as well. So, you know, we, we still have, um, some bills that are coming through that might force counties to become VCA, um, with eleven days of early voting, or ten days of early voting, which is, I support, but if legislation moves forward and there's a, like, some type of bill that is written and, and we find an author to present it, then we're going to be asked to allow us for, allow us to be flexible and give us, give us the, the ability to deploy the model that benefits Kings County, not benefits other counties.
Um, just one more, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Villa, thank you for that. So when you say that, um, expanding the number of days doesn't make sense, are you just saying that from a fiscal standpoint, or from the standpoint that it was, that it would not do anything to increase turnout? Because I believe that, um, you know, selected officials and, uh, use an administrator, that that is what, um, our, that is what our duty is to, to make sure that, uh, there's a multitude of, uh, voting options for, um, everyone that's been mentioned before.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Cultural, um, party affiliation, whatever, none of that. Just that it is available to increase the turnout, and that's the mission. So, again, are you, are you coming from a standpoint of fiscal or that this would not do anything to increase voter turnout?
Yeah. Well, first of all, I like that statement you made. I, I truly appreciate that because I'm a, I'm a firm believer in my office operates under that same goal is to increase participation throughout Kings County, regardless of your political affiliation. Uh, we don't look at a person and, and decide whether we should vote or not based on the political affiliation. We want to, and we are trying very hard to ensure that every single voter in Kings County has the opportunity to vote. Now, going back to whether it's a fiscal responsibility of having eleven days, it, it's, it's both. I mean, you have a vote center that operates for eight hours a day for two days, and you get one single vote. And I'm not picking on Avanale. It's just, it's, it's the type of county that we have. I mean, if, if you operate out of LA where they have five and a half million voters, you're going to get a lot more people turning out. In Kings County, where we have just over sixty-one thousand, a lot of folks are used to vote by mail. A lot of folks want to come out on Election Day, and by us being available, we're going to continue to be available, and we're going to have those centers open for one vote if that's what it takes. But it doesn't make sense to operate for eleven days throughout that time. So if, if legislation was to be adopted or even heard to, to allow us to be flexible and, you know, operate under the same model that we did during the November and during the September election, that, that would be, that would be awesome for Kings County and for us. Four days, uh, uh, three days of early voting and on Election Day, I think gives the voters ample opportunity to vote, plus everybody gets a ballot by mail. Uh, this coming election that we have scheduled for June seventh, we're going to expand the, the ballot drop boxes. We can go to eleven. We're going to install one box in Kettleman City, and, uh, we're looking, um, to expand that service if we can, uh, because it is beneficial for the voter to drop off their ballot at a secure ballot drop box. So that's what we're moving.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Villa. You and your staff for doing a hell of a job over there, especially with the challenges the last two years, and I appreciate you clarifying this for me. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
The only one.
Oh, I'll pause for yours.
The only one I have, uh, done is, uh, the mail theft on the federal legislation. And I, I know United States Parcel Service, uh, it, it is a felony. I would like to extend that umbrella out to the UPS, Amazon, um, uh, Federal Express, because, uh, these porch pirates are stealing stuff that they have no idea what's in it, and whether it's the California threshold of a, of a misdemeanor or felony, I'd like to elevate that all to a felony, um, especially, um, for these individuals that are either getting, whether it's parts or, uh, sometimes food, sometimes medication. So I think it would make sense to try to extend that mail theft, um, definition through, uh, United States Parcel Service to all deliveries, um, on, onto private property. So I don't know how to do that legally.
I'll agree with that as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Cause I, I think, I think, uh, you know, the mail theft certainly has, uh, some, some history and prominence, uh, but I think it's time to extend that out to UPS, um, and all the other parcel deliveries. Mr. Hill, you have a question or comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'd like to take this opportunity to, once again, restate that, you know, this is a study session. We will be bringing the final item back next week for your, uh, consideration and adoption. We'll make the applicable changes as requested, uh, and do any research that you, uh, deem necessary. I also want to take this opportunity to thank staff. Uh, this was a, a quick and heavy lift, given what's going on in the office with COVID and the number of cases and the folks we have out, uh, but they, they really buckle down, them and the departments, to get this for our board right before the NACO conference, which is why it's necessary that we get it done in this timeframe. So thank you, Tom. Thank you, Matthew. Thank you, Kiria, and thank you, department heads.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I, I have one question, and maybe, maybe part of it, maybe not, so, if counsel, uh, you know, we did the redistricting here and the congressional part of it. I believe they violated a law that was put in place, keep King County as a whole. Is that something we can put on our platform as well, or is that something we need to look into for bring up lawsuits to the redistricting committee?
On the Senate map or congressional?
Congressional.
Congressional.
But that doesn't matter. I mean, it's
Yeah, it's congressional map, yeah.
To be kept whole. And I believe, uh, I talked to Larry Spikes, he did it. There was a rule put in place, King County Hall, uh, King, Kings County Hall done about ten years ago or twenty years ago. And I probably should look into it, see if that's something we should bring back to go to DC or, uh, lawsuit. I'm not sure.
Let me see if I understand. Are you seeking to challenge the action, um, or are you seeking to implement policy, um, to further legislative, led legislation that would mandate Kings County be kept whole?
It's already been done to be kept whole. I believe they violated it.
If you are, if that would probably be an action, so it's probably not appropriate for the legislative platform, but, um, certainly if you want to consider viability of an action regarding, um, the redistricting process, then we can do that separately.
Okay. I, I believe it, it is in place now, but has been ignored. But I think it's up to us to look it up or bring it back. If it isn't something you can do on your end with, uh, the legal side of it, or it's something you legislatively is a Y asset, if it's my
Yeah, we can, we can definitely look into that, but I don't believe it'll be long in the legislative platform if there's already legislation that addresses it.
All right. Might be a closed session item to take up and pull up the congressional map. I believe that's what supervisor's referring to. I think that's the only
We'll reach out to Larry Spikes. He understands the law and what the numbers are called when it happened. Uh, and I'm not sure if it was ten years ago or twenty years ago is one during the redistricting where they tried to divide the county up, and it was against the law to do that because of our, um, need to keep the minorities, I don't know, the exact, uh, one, anyway. I'll reach out to Larry, see what he has to say.
Yeah, we wrote letters. I think Dennis account, as a, uh, board as a whole, we sent a letter to the commission saying we want our county kept intact, because they tried to, under the assembly map. Sorry, what's that?
This is the platform.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Boyet, do you have a question or comment?
Yes, sir. Uh, just want to, uh, give, I, I know we have Chris Comm and Paragon online. I see Jason there and I see Hassan. Um, you know, obviously thanking them for all of their hard work that they've done, but, uh, see if they have anything, any additional input or, uh, feedback for us today. Give them a chance to speak if necessary.
Good point. Thank you.
Yeah, this is, uh, should I just jump in?
Yes, sir.
All right. This, thanks, Matthew. Uh, this is Jason with Jason Seegan, um, Chief Operating Officer for the Chris Comm Company. Uh, just wanted to reiterate Ed's comments too. Just wanted to thank, um, staff, Domingo and Matthew for all their hard work. We, we had numerous days, um, in your conference room up there, uh, talking with the department heads and really appreciated their time and, uh, candor, and looking forward to having, um, more of that as this session here in California rolls on. And, um, everybody there has my contact information, and I have weekly meetings with Ed and with Kiria. And so, um, if there are any questions, any concerns through the session, please don't hesitate to reach out.
Thank you, Jason.
And, uh, I can
Good afternoon, everyone.
If you don't mind. Yeah. Haas, you want to go ahead?
Hey, everybody. This is Hassan. Uh, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. First off, thank you for the opportunity to present today. Um, great overview, great discussion. Um, we're happy to provide a few more comments on the platform, how it kind of ties in with Congress and its agenda for this year. And actually, before I dive in, you probably saw Joe Cron on the line as well. Uh, Tom Joseph is here, got the whole Paragon team. Uh, we've all had the chance to review the platform. We believe the document's pretty solid. Um, I know sometimes it's hard to determine what direction Congress will kind of take throughout the year, but this platform should allow us to quickly respond to kind of whatever may pop up in DC. Um, and saying that, I'm sure it's going to be another interesting year. Uh, I see Joe nodding. He knows. Um, we're now in the second session of the hundred and seventeenth Congress, so all the bills from last year, they're going to carry over this year. Uh, you'll see some more bills being introduced. Um, speaking of bills being carried over, that does include the Build Back Better Act, which at the moment, I would say is very much on life support, could be revived at some point. Again, this is a big priority for the president. Um, right now, it's on the back burner. There may be an opportunity to advance some smaller piece of the bill later this year, but that's sort of yet to be seen. Um, I'll also add that we did see a very active Congress last year. There were a number of big-ticket items that kind of went through the legislative process. Talking, of course, about the, the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA, uh, and the bipartisan infrastructure law. We expect this year to look a little bit different with a lot more election-year politics involved. You've got an upcoming Supreme Court fight on the horizon, um, and potentially more to come on the tensions brewing between Russia and the Ukraine. That could take up a big portion of the congressional agenda. Um, saying that huge issue this year will be on implementation of the infrastructure bill. The platform does highlight a number of key funding opportunities for the county. I'm talking broadband infrastructure and planning grants. We're also talking about some new and, uh, also some existing and expanded transportation funding opportunities. Um, on that note, I'll also quickly mention that the, um, and I did include this on the legislative update that went out last night, but the White House put out a, what they're calling a guidebook for local governments on the new law. We think it can definitely be a useful resource. It is very, very lengthy. Uh, I want to say it's north of four hundred and fifty pages. We've actually been working on our own document we feel might We've actually been working on our own document, we feel might be a little bit more helpful. It'll definitely be shorter, uh, and we're hoping to get that out the door soon. Uh, I also want to touch on earmarks. Uh, nothing specifically in the platform on this, but we are hopeful there'll be another opportunity to apply for earmarks in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Um, and that's if earmarks do return. Um, you know, it's a big question mark at this point. Again, a quick disclaimer, Congress hasn't wrapped up its fiscal year twenty-two budget yet. Uh, federal government's been operating on a series of short-term continuing resolutions. The latest one is expected to expire, I believe it's February eighteenth. Joe, is that right? I'm looking at you. Eighteenth, yep. Um, the county does have one earmark that's still left in play, and that's the Sheriff's Body worn Camera Project. Uh, it's something we're continuing to push. Um, Congress, again, you know, they'll, they'll have a couple of weeks here to try to get the budget through. There has been some positive momentum. Folks are talking, that's a lot more than we could say a few months ago, uh, about the budget. Uh, there is some hope that they can pass something by the end of month, so we'll keep you posted on that. Uh, and I may have gone on a little bit longer than I thought, uh, but if Joe or Tom don't have anything else to add, we can kind of turn it back over to the board.
If I, if I may, I just want to, uh, emphasize one thing. I guess the, the one takeaway I would want, uh, for the board today and also for the department heads that are on there, and as Hassan mentioned, we did have the infrastructure, uh, law passed last year, a historic piece of legislation, unprecedented, one point two trillion dollars over ten years. Um, five hundred and fifty billion of that is new spending over five years. The takeaway and the message would be there are opportunities, uh, that are beginning to be announced and rolled out through, you know, dozens of, of, of agencies. Um, and so I would say be prepared and be ready. Uh, you know, departments, uh, you know, you may want to look at, obviously, uh, perhaps, uh, you know, hiring the services of some grant writers, because there are going to be opportunities. Um, you know, I, I think suffice it to say probably no single jurisdiction is going to be able to apply effectively for every single competitive grant that's coming out from the federal government. But there are going to be some things that match up very, very nicely with your priorities and that are reflected, uh, in your platform. So again, we have a document that's just about ready. The White House is highlighting those. Some, some information on these new grant programs are, are coming out, um, sort of in, in, you know, in the coming weeks. And, you know, some won't be rolled out, quite frankly, until next year, because this was a huge undertaking. It's, it's, um, it's a massive piece of legislation. Bottom line, opportunities are there. We will help guide you as far as, you know, what you're, what you're going to want to compete for and apply for.
Good, thank you. Any follow-up, uh, Supervisor Valley?
Go ahead, Sue. Just one, uh, very quickly, and I, I'm not sure, we may be a little late on time on this with, uh, my comments on WOTUS, but I, I think under the federal register, does that close on the seventh? The, uh, the ability to provide comments on, uh, the new WOTUS?
Yes, Supervisor, it does close on the seventh. There were, uh, members of Congress who were pushing very aggressively to have that timeframe extended, which, uh, if I recall, in the last WOTUS go around, and you know, it's been a big, bit of a ping pong game on, on WOTUS, sort of a battle of administrations as far as, uh, which waters are, are regulated under the Clean Water Act. I believe they extended that at the last minute. Uh, we can certainly help. I know that the county had weighed in the last time around, uh, and we're happy to, uh, you know, kind of, uh, refresh those comments and get a draft over to, uh, over to the CAO's office. And you may want to consider, um, you know, doing that. I'll, I'll just say this, I think, I think it's pretty clear what direction, uh, this particular administration will go on the WOTUS rewrite. Um, like I said, we had sort of the Obama era rule, and then it was reversed, uh, via Trump, and now I think it's going to be, you know, reversed once, once again. The wild card in all this, and as you know, this has been extensively litigated going back many, many years. Uh, the Supreme Court has agreed to take up a case. Uh, some legal advisors are saying there's a good chance the current court will side with landowners on this. Um, and so while I wouldn't say don't weigh in through the regulatory process, uh, we think the writing is on the wall and it's probably pretty clear which way EPA and the court will go on this. Again, you should still submit comments, but, but to be candid, probably the best potential for this, uh, to, um, to kind of align with, with the board's priorities would be through the, uh, the legal action that's pending right now at the Supreme Court.
Very good. I, I just didn't know we wouldn't be meeting back till Tuesday and if, if, uh, we had the authority to issue some sort of letter, respond to the federal register, uh, without, uh, board approval, um, how does that timeline work?
Uh, we have a couple of options. I'm going to lean towards County Council, but, uh, your board could give us direction today to, to take that action. Uh, we also have the, uh, ability under the CAO's office, uh, in the current legislative platform that's adopted to sub send that letter of opposition as well. Uh, are there any other options that you're aware of, County Council?
I'm not aware of any other options, but what I would say, if your board wants to take action today to authorize, um, to specifically authorize sending a letter, then I would recommend that you designate the chairman or one other person to, um, review and authorize them to sign that letter upon, um, just kind of take that preemptive action and designate a single person to act on behalf of the board signing a letter.
Okay. Well, can't, I was just going to say, if, if he can't do it, um, procedure-wise now, then I believe the, the supervisor has the option to do it during his board member announcements, where he could direct staff. And then, um, the chair could, uh, call for a, uh, consensus of the board and, and then the letter could be, um, written with the show of support of all the board supervisors on his request.
Yeah, and, and it sounds like it's in our, it's in our previous, um, so it's been approved previous, um, and we're just refreshing that letter. And I feared that, you know, it may or, we kind of know the direction it may go, but I think if we're silent, we're, you know, it's our fault and, uh, we shouldn't be silent on this issue, um, especially with the core of our, our, uh, industry is being agriculture and not only agriculture. I mean, this expansion of this rule is going to come back at the county and everyone else, you know? So I, I think it's important that we, uh, at least have our voice, uh, issued.
Perhaps the most prudent approach would be, um, for the administrative officer to use his authority under the current legislative platform and submit a letter on the county's behalf.
Very good. By consensus, Supervisor Valley, question or comment?
Uh, um, comment, Mr. Chair, thank you. Uh, I want to thank also our federal lobbyists for being on today and especially have the attention of all three of them. I know they're extremely busy on the East Coast. Thank you, gentlemen, for, uh, being on here with us. And if I could just take advantage of that, I know that earmarks, uh, was brought up, but, um, you know, it doesn't necessarily obviously always have to be an earmark, but could you please, as you're, uh, monitoring our meeting, last year, you know, we had a long discussion on going after, um, the need for funding for, um, a pedestrian overpass bridge, uh, in Kettleman City. We, we were able to get two million dollars from the state budget under the, um, monies that, uh, were put in the transportation pot up there. So on the federal side, without it being an earmark, if it's an opportunity for the County of Kings, um, to receive some money, uh, please, um, just be, be, uh, um, attentive to that. I know, um, just Senator Padilla's office with minimal outreach seems very interested in helping, uh, to deliver another two million dollars, uh, for that bridge and just know, um, even if the county's saying, hey, look, we could put together a four million dollar budget, if we receive two more million, um, on the federal side, then that's two million of county funds that our roads department can keep for other priorities around the county, if we're able to get, uh, monies delivered from the federal side. So thank you for your time and, um, thank you for your attention, the County of Kings. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Appreciate your comments and we will do exactly that. We are looking for those types of opportunities through, again, some of those new and even enhanced, uh, programs that are coming through the infrastructure law that, as you said, wouldn't necessarily be an earmark. So we, we have an eye out for that. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Good. Any other questions, comments, concerns, any, from anyone on the legislative platform? Very none. Uh, Dom, you want to close?
Well, thank you, sir. Uh, again, as echo the CAO, thanks to the department heads and the, uh, our lobbyists from Washington and the state. And then we will make the necessary, as the CAO mentioned, uh, from Supervisor Peterson will, we'll get back with you and the one from the, uh, the minute.
Very good. Thank you. Good luck. Our next, uh, steady session of the morning, uh, also comes from administration regarding the American Rescue Plan Act funding. And Mr. Hill, you want to kick off the discussion?
I'm actually going to allow, I shouldn't say allow, uh, Kiria Martinez, Assistant CAO will be the one carrying this forward.
Morning, carry up.
Good morning, board members. Give me one second, let me just share my screen.
Technology is wonderful. Maybe we need an IT guy?
My apologies, I don't normally sit on this side and I use a different microphone. Good morning, board members. Kiria Martinez, Assistant CAO. The coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, also known as SLFRF funds, which I will refer to as are a part of the American Rescue Plan, delivers three hundred and fifty billion to state and local and tribal governments across the country to support the response to and recovery from the COVID-nineteen public health emergency. The program ensures that the governments have the resources needed to fight the pandemic and support families and businesses struggling with its public health and economic impacts, maintain vital public services, and build a strong, resilient, and equitable recovery by making investments that support long-term growth and opportunity. Kings County is scheduled to receive approximately twenty-nine million dollars, and we have already received fourteen million. Today I have the ARPA committee present virtually and in person, and I will begin with an overview of my presentation. In the first, in the next three slides, I will go over the final rule, the projects to date, the projects proposed, with the category glories these projects fall into, and then I will have a section for comments, questions, and discussion. In May of twenty twenty-one, the Treasury published the interim final rule, IFR, describing eligible and ineligible uses of the funds, sought feedback from the public on these programs, and began to distribute the funds. The interim rule went immediately into effect in May, since then governments have used their funds to meet the, and immediate pandemic response needs. As governments began to deploy this funding in their communities, Treasury carefully considered feedback provided, and the Treasury received over fifteen hundred comments, participated a hundred, um, meetings, and there were some key changes and clarification in the final rule. The final rule has been released and it takes effect April first of twenty twenty-two. Until that time, the interim rules remain in effect and none of the final rules change our eligibility for the previous, uh, uses of our projects. The final rule delivers broader flexibility and greater simplicity in the program responsive to feedback in the comment process. Among other clarifications and changes, the final rule provides, um, some of the, um, clarification. For example, in replacing loss in public sector, the final rule offers standard allowance for revenue loss up to ten million, allowing recipients to select between a standard amount or using a revenue, revenue loss calculations. The county used a, the revenue law, loss calculations, and our anticipated amount was four point two million dollars, and that amount is currently sitting in a trust as to not fall into our fund balance. In addition to programs and services for public health and economic impacts, the final rule clarifies that recipients can use funds for capital expenditures that support an eligible COVID-nineteen public health or economic response. The final rule provides an expanded set of households and communities that are presumed to be impacted by the pandemic, thereby allowing recipients to provide response to a broad set of households and entities without requiring additional analysis. Further, the final rule allows for broader set of uses to restore and support government employment, hiring above the recipient's pre-pandemic baselines, providing funds to employees that experienced pay cuts or furloughs, avoiding layoffs, and providing retention incentives. The final rule delivers more streamlined options to provide premium pay by broadening the share of eligible workers who can receive premium pay without a written justification, while maintaining a focus on lower-income frontline workers performing essential work. Finally, the final rule significantly broadens eligible broadband infrastructure investments to address challenges with broadband access, access affordability, and adds an additional eligible water and sewer infrastructure investments, includes a broader range of lead stormwater management projects, projects that are eligible for clean water state revolving funds and the drinking water state revolving funds are eligible under ARPA funds. Now, review the projects to date. So for the round one, we came to your board in a study session on August third and requested for approval of approximately nine point four million dollars. In round one, we presented nine items. Those in projects included two million to go to public health. This amount would be for programming services necessary to continue efforts in responding to COVID-nineteen. For the job training offices, we set aside five hundred thousand for businesses. For the county board chambers upgrades, we set aside a hundred and fifty thousand to physically prepare for any camera equipment or sound, sound audio for the purpose of allowing the chambers to remote access. We also recommended information technology upgrades in the amount of one million sixty-four thousand twenty-four dollars to add upgrades to existing networks due to added network pressures. Further, we, we recommended five hundred thousand to community service district for utilities arrears. For our county public works department, we set aside three hundred ninety-five thousand for the purchase of two generators, one for information technology and one for dispatch services. For county emergency preparedness, we set aside four hundred and thirty-eight thousand. This amount was for personal protective equipment, including gloves, cleaning materials, for our juvenile hall in jail. On October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, your board approved one-time five hundred lump sum payments to full-time county employees, under the eligibility that all county employees are in the definition of essential workers. With these expenses, at that time, we spent eight hundred and ten thousand dollars. On January twenty-fifth last week, to your board, we presented two items, the Lucas CPR machines in Office Three Sixty-Five for three years in the amount of one million one hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and nine, leaving a balance of currently to date of eighteen million three hundred and forty-seven thousand three hundred and Currently, the ARPA committee has proposed an amount of fund for this use at this time of two million two hundred and fifty-seven thousand six hundred. If the board approves the proposed recommendation, again, this is a study session, we will come back for action item next week. The remaining balance of ARPA funds would be sixteen million eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. First, we would start off with the county pathologist contract in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand. Pursuant to California State Government Code and Health and Safety Code, the county is mandated to determine the method and manner of certain reportable deaths. Medical procedures related to this mandate must be fulfilled by forensic pathologists who is skilled and licensed to determine the cause of death. COVID-nineteen has significantly increased the deaths in Kings County, resulting in increased services reportable deaths. The proposed amount would cover the cost of code bid nineteen-related deaths and a portion of the pathologist contract. The sheriff's office will maintain data on the COVID-related deaths moving forward in effort to continue to use ARPA funds in the future for this purpose. This is an area where the rules clearly define the funds are to restore public sector capacity, which support the government's ability to deliver critical services. The SLFRF funds may be used for cost association to those in public safety, public health, healthcare, human services, and similar employee of recipient of government services. Public health is clearly indicated in the final rules that include medical examiner and morgue staff support services for patient care. The next item we have is the county human resources scanning project in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand. During the emergency shutdown, the human resources identify the need to streamline daily operations to provide effective services critical to ensure, ensure employees were met. Currently, the county employs over sixteen hundred full-time employees, which requires to create maintained personnel files for each employee. The human resources goal is to eliminate the need for paper personnel file and electronic personnel file system to avoid constant public contact with employees. An electronic personnel file would eliminate that, ensuring easy accessibility, and this project would fall into the public sector capacity in the category of providing effective service delivery. Next, we have the public works two meg generator in the amount of five hundred thousand. The two meg generator which engaged is dangerously close to failure due to age and excessive loading. The proposed project will upgrade the generator by moving manual switching and replacing the load switching for optimum safety and efficiently. This will require some departments now on two meg generator to remove and others to be added. Capital expenditures like the meg generator fall under the, under the one million, under the one million dollar category, which requires no justification under the rules. However, again, this is another section where the public sector capacity really emphasizes that recipients can use funding to restore and bolster public se- sector capacity and workforce to effectively provide delivery of services. Next, we have one, one million three hundred and twenty-seven thousand six hundred for information technology upgrades. for information technology upgrades for county purposes. In round one of ARPA funding, the IT department requested to replace 51 network switches. These network switches were replaced due to the end of service life, no longer supported. For the second round, the IT department has requested to replace the remaining 77 network switches that will be end of life in December of this year. The network switches are the backbone of connectivity from individual departments, buildings, to the IT data center and internet. Again, this is another section where the category that would fall into is to effectively provide delivery of services under the public sector capacity. And lastly, we have $40,000 going to the Kings Commission on Aging. Now that things have started to reopen, people have returned to work, leaving the elderly families without anyone to care for them. Primary caregivers have been impacted due to pandemic, leaving families to rely solely on the Commission on Aging Adult Daycare. For some, the daycare is the only lifeline. KC COA is a nonprofit agency that supports and affordable daycare for seniors. Their goal is not to turn any away for the inability to pay. Kings County provides county general funds to the Commission on Aging in order to meet their match requirements, and the mission at the Commission on Aging is to maintain and improve the physical, psychological, and social wellness of individuals ages six or older in Kings County. With increased funding for the adult daycare, the services for the program can maintain its ability to perform, and this project falls into the category of responding to negative economic impacts and impacted households and community. Treasury recognizes the projects, including this one, to respond to impacts the pandemic has had on households. At this time, if you look at your screen, I've also provided in your package and is available in the Treasury website, are the final interim rules. This is a final overview friendly user guide, because the original final rules actually is a very lengthy document. I would like to finish off with mentioning that some counties have designated the entire funding for ARPA, and some counties have had multiple discussions like we are having today. Our approach is to take this step by step as the pandemic seems to be changing. For example, another item on the horizon that our county membership officer, Ed Hill, had mentioned is the returning supplement sick leave, which expired last year, and this is an area where ARPA funds can clearly cover these costs. Also, items like the KC AO that came up to your board today, you know, it wasn't projected, however, it was needed. Additionally, we have been tracking payroll costs from staff spending time on COVID. Currently, that amount is nearly almost half a million to date since July of 2021. These recommendations can provide a substantial infusion of resources to help turn the tide on the pandemic and lay the foundation for a strong recovery. Thank you for the ARPA Committee who has continuously met. This is an opportunity also for department heads who are listening here in the board chambers or over WebEx that are requesting such projects to make suggestions via the ARPA Committee. I invite all department heads and staff to read the final rule and consider other ideas to present to our ARPA Committee with the category that they do fall into. At this time, if there is no formal action requested at the moment, I'd appreciate your time, and I'm available if there are any questions.
Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just to frame the discussion, the five or six items that have been brought as priority today, if we fund those items per the request, how much money is left on the table to move forward with other ideas?
Karia, do you have an accounting to that?
I do. It's approximately $16 million.
Leftover?
Correct.
Okay. Then, well, Mr. Chairman, this is our time to communicate with the ARPA Committee and our CIO's office. Then, I would just like to be representative of more of the human impact to the residents of our county. You know, can you put that list back up again, please, Kara? You know, when I think about COVID, I don't think about Human Resources Scanning Project. I don't think about a 2-meg generator for the county. I get it. These are monies there. If it could be framed as coming under, then okay. But I like to see power warnings from the county on taking care of our community and the human beings who have gone through this pandemic with us and are left to also shoulder a large load there because of the negative impacts that COVID has had on our county. And I'm not seeing that. I see one item, Kings County Commission on Aging Adult Daycare. I know we've all supported that, but that's only $40,000 compared to millions of dollars here to IT. And I would hope that if we're going to spend that much money on IT, that the county, the board, that we have a commitment to keep broadcasting our meetings, even when we go back to normal and we're all sitting in our regular places and the chamber gets reset, that that amount of money, if we're going to use ARPA funds for that, is showing a dedication to keep live broadcasting going. So everyone has access to the county level of decision-making that impacts them, I believe, more than federal government and state government. We're the first level here. The local impact, and I'd like to see them continue to be able to come on YouTube, WebEx, and even do it better with that amount of money. So our IT director, I hope that's where you're coming from with a request for that kind of money, because if it wasn't for ARPA funds, then I would say, my question to you would be, what is your existing plan to replace these, right? These, this isn't a surprise. We know that this equipment you're talking about was depreciating. So I would assume there's another existing funding plan to replace this minus this opportunity under ARPA funds. So again, Mr. Chairman, and then also going back to Kings County Commission on Aging, as we brought up earlier, the need with the current surge, there is more of a need for monies for the Kings Cares Program. Again, I'm trying very hard to be positive, but I don't think that we've given the Kings Cares Program under the umbrella of KC AO that we've given it the due diligence of fiscal responsibility. We're a very conservative Board of Supervisors, and I don't see that being applicable under this program. And from being around this program as long as we have, I've talked to a multitude of KC AO Board of Directors. I know they tell me they're not informed on the Kings Cares Program. The execution of the program from the KC AO level and the report we got here a couple hours ago was very general. You know, there's no data to back up what was reported. We need to see out of the $2 million, how much that money actually hit the streets, hit these families, and helped them, and compared to the overhead. And again, I think there's a conversation to be had with Commission on Aging, who if afforded an opportunity to receive a lot more of these ARPA funds, how they could be helpful in reaching the senior population, getting the food to them when needed, taking that workload off KC AO, seeing if they could actually do it better with a lower overhead, Mr. Chairman, for the senior population. I think that's a conversation that we should be having, but I just don't feel that concerned. I mean, last week, we had a 20-minute conversation with the DA on a $200,000 grant opportunity. Rightfully so, the right questions were asked. It's a very conservative fiscal approach. But on $2 million with KC AO, I just feel that we're not doing our job on making sure that money is being spent the right way. And again, I'm saying that from positive approaches I could be. And so if the director from Commission on Aging is on the line, and if it's appropriate during the study session, I would love to hear if they felt they could be helpful in expanding the Kings Cares Program to fund not only KC AO, but fund Commission on Aging and do better and help out in this existing surge. Another one to come if that's what happens after Super Bowl weekend. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Peterson, you have a question, Tom?
Yeah, just a few comments. And, you know, first, I want to thank this board. You know, a few people recognize, I think, the sound financial policy that this board has been part of since its existence, you know, since we became a county. And I think that that sound financial policy put us in strong positions. And those strong positions allow for us to deliver, you know, those programs that were, you know, I mean, as you learn when you come here, you know, what is the county? Well, it's a political subdivision of the state. You know, we're mandated to deliver state programs, and I think that's what we've been doing. This funding is directed to make sure that those programs and the people that need that help get them. And so, while I know we have, we'll always have differences on, you know, how we allocate this funding. I think it's important to remember that it's just one-time money and that we're not committing ourselves to extended programs that we can't support. You know, our biggest value here at the county is our employees, right? They're the people that make those contacts. They're the people that deliver those programs. And as we go forward, we need to remember that, you know, look at the cost of delivery of programs, no matter what industry you're in. You know, I watch an agricultural show every morning that talks about, you know, the cost of inputs and, you know, I mean, the markets are running, I mean, it's 30% to 40% what it was, you know, just a year ago to deliver those programs. And so I think we need to be very mindful of those initial costs. You know, one of the things that I wanted to address is our financial accounting system. That has to change. When our administration doesn't have access for key financial decisions that, you know, our programs just won't create, that's a problem. That's a problem for, you know, this organization. And I think we need to look hard at how we make sure that in the greatest challenges, you know, of our time, this pandemic, that we're sound moving forward. And, you know, I think there's an opportunity when we get to a point where... But one other question before, I apologize. What's the... We had timelines for the first half to the first half of the funding to be spent, and then the second half, and what are those timelines again?
We actually have until, we have to obligate the funds by December of 2024, and we have to spend them all by December of 2026.
First and second?
For all of it.
For all of it, okay. Thank you. So, you know, looking forward, we have some time to be very prudent with this funding. And, you know, I think people have accommodated. Accommodated is a terrible word. There's people that are losing their life every day. But this pandemic is changing every day as well. And, you know, I think from the outset, when this thing took place, I mean, it freaked us all out, you know. What are we up against here? And I think, you know, we're seeing that while there are still people that have, you know, a great threat to them, that we still have to act as a county and to be here to deliver those programs now and beyond. And I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't make significant jumps and spend significant dollars on things that are going to impact us into the future. And, you know, when you look at retirement costs in this county, and, you know, we move salaries on a regular basis, I think those are all things of concern that challenge our ability to provide those services. And again, as I've stated, when you look at the cost going forward, they're not going to go down, they're going to go up. And so with that, those are my comments. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Supervisor Peterson. Supervisor Verboen?
Thank you very much. Yeah, Michael Sarno, our kind of the line with Supervisor Peterson as well. You know, when this pandemic started here over two years ago, uncertainty of it, they said, well, I'll be here for a month to an immediate amount of change. We may deal with this for a while. So I agree with Donkey, Donkey too excited to get the money out of town. We might need it in 2024. We may need it in 2023. So make sure we make a good analysis of the programs that we're giving money to. Don't let anybody hijack the money. Be very cautious what we do with it. I think the virus will be here for a long time, and we live with it and give it to people that are in need of it. We're all affected by it. But some of us can handle it, some can't. But what they cannot do, when they cannot take care of themselves, make sure they get the money they need to survive. Not rushing judgment, by the way, just make sure we get it in the right place.
Thank you. Supervisor Goodness, any questions to comment?
No, we've taken care of our county so well that so far through everything, through all the obstacles that we've been through. And I think we've done a good job by extending ourselves to what we have. But we still are doing some things that we shouldn't do. They're very, very visible. And here, we're complaining about helping people, you know, in struggling times. So I can't. That's just a comment today.
Good, thank you. John Devlin, IT Director, I said you stand up. Were you just stretching your legs, or do you want to say something? Certainly appreciate you being here and your input on the information technology side of the disbursements.
Sure. Thank you, Chairman. Supervisor Valley, through the chair. You made the comments about the IT, and I want to mention that SAN, which is a piece of this, that's all the data that the county uses. The county doesn't just use it for its own benefit, it uses it for the benefit of all the citizens. And the networking that we need, that's how all the people connect to that data. So it'd be akin to having a fire department without a fire engine. It just doesn't work without that equipment. Sort of the same thing here. We can't deliver anything to our constituencies without those pieces. I just wanted to emphasize that.
And can you expand on my comments, concerns on this investment helping to keep live broadcasting going?
Yeah, actually, it would. This, all this networking equipment, I was in my office earlier, and it said unable to deliver the picture, which is only that big on my screen, because there wasn't enough bandwidth in the network. This is all newer equipment. Some of the equipment that we have in place, we haven't replaced all of it yet that we just purchased, because some of the stuff hasn't come in because of the chip shortage. The stuff that we, if this is approved, and we order it, it's going to be at least six to eight months out. So, but once we get those things all in place, that should not happen at all, because we're going to have a lot more bandwidth on our network.
Okay. So to connect, to get your connection for the use of ARPA funds, is that where you're coming from, though, sir? Are you coming from that point of view that this is a great use of ARPA funds because it will help to keep the community informed with the opportunity of this live broadcasting that we've taken up during the pandemic?
Yes, that, and plus the previous one to upgrade the board chambers.
Okay.
From what I understand, it was the big expense specifically on the chamber, wasn't necessarily the technology, but that if you do any modifications to the room, you have to make it more compliant with ADA and other issues. But you already set aside some money for that, and we did have a consultant that specializes in that, as opposed to us who really aren't AV people.
Okay.
You can kind of tell. But we have a professional firm that's done this with many other board chambers and city council chambers.
Yes, sir. Thanks, sir. Appreciate your follow-up and your efforts for the county.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think part of that other, too, is the public safety hubs, and I think we talked a little bit about it. And whether that's, because one thing in the pandemic with people being quarantined and being out of service is they aren't able to report crimes. They aren't able to utilize telemedicine or telepsychiatry. And I think by increasing the hub space here and increasing those possibilities in outlying areas, you're going to open up that communication, not just with the board, but with the public to be able to access. And whether, again, whether that service is telepsychiatry, telemedicine, or the sheriff's department, or probation, or whoever, to be able to report some of the crimes. Because when you took schools offline, you took a lot of other public awareness and public interaction. All of a sudden, a lot of those people were isolated.
Yeah, no.
Unable to do any of the communication they were before, so.
Supervisor Verboen, I hated to cut you off.
Fine, I'm just going to think back on what you said. You know, two years ago, when someone said they're going to give you money to upgrade your broadband system for the COVID, I would have said, what the heck? What are you guys talking about? But having us sit home the first couple weeks, I didn't have the broadband to do my board meetings. I had to do all my board meetings here on every single meeting because I don't live in a community that supports rural living with the COVID internet. My internet bandwidth is used up because more people are using it out in rural areas. My internet bandwidth is used up, because more people are using it out in rural areas. So my ideas have changed in the last twenty-four months, that it is important to do that. You know, I, I struggle in the country because I pay three hundred fifty dollars a month just to have access to internet. I share it with other people, do the same thing, and we're all on it. So the bandwidth is not big enough to do a good meeting, and it's frustrating at times. And so I just come in here and need your bandwidth. So anything you can do to prove that, I appreciate. And I know Supervisor Valley lives in Corbin, they've had live internet, you could live seeing videos privately in Corbin for the last, you know, eight years, but you can't do that near my house. So anything we can do to prove that, I appreciate. Thank you.
I support that too.
Yeah, and, and education was the same way. Whether it's, there, there's been a big push for online education, especially when the schools shut down, and whether that is primary, secondary, or higher education, I think that's important to have that link available. And that would really help Kings County being able to access higher educational opportunities through online education. So certainly the, the students of both K through twelve and high school students gobbled up a whole lot of bandwidth that was, you know, not even considered before the pandemic when, when the school systems went offline and, and everybody was homeschooled. So we really had, need to set the, the height a lot higher, because just as in agriculture where technology has come along and as soon as you, you know, have one application, there's five more that pop into your mind, because we can, oh, you can do that? Well, if you can do that, you know, can you move on? So I think we really don't aim high enough. I know through West Hills, you know, we, we considerably aim too low. And was, so whatever your goal is, you probably need to triple or quadruple that, because there's, there's going to be needs that you, you don't even think about now that'll have that application in the future. And it'll just continue to gobble up bandwidth speed and time.
Yeah, I, I would follow also with attention to the bipartisan infrastructure bill that was passed. Matching funds are available to do these kinds of things. And if we can maximize those funds as well to assist, it just pushes that money that much further, so.
And, and that brings up a good point. Cities and schools also received ARPA funds that we probably need to coordinate, make sure that we have that all coordinated and, and understood, so we're not duplicating services.
Sure. To that end, Chairman Neves and the rest of the board, I've been working, I formed, as soon as I heard about that other money, actually before it was even done, I formed a broadband coalition here in Kings, made up several department heads, but also invited West Hills Community College. Actually, they reached out to Joe Neves and they referred to me. I'm also working with the California Emerging Technology Fund, Frank Gornick, who's the retired chancellor from West Hills. We've been meeting with him, we're trying to form a regional committee, so that maybe on our way out to get great coverage for Doug Verboon's area, maybe we can also go and reach Leighton, which is in a different county. But instead of having Fresno trying to pull fiber all the way to Leighton, if we just hit you and them in a smart way, we'll maximize the amount. And Frank said that's exactly what CETF wanted to see is that, and they're trying to form one valleywide. So we're trying to get Kern, Tulare, I've already roped in Fresno, and working together smarter. And actually, I guess David Valadeo, Congressman Valadeo's office had been talking to West Hills last week, the week before, and West Hills mentioned the work that I'm already doing, so they wanted to meet with us next week on the tenth. So we are working.
Can you share that with us before we leave for our trip too, so we can touch it up with his staff as well?
Sure.
Good. And, you know, the one missing link, and, and we addressed it in the first, first round, is the community service districts. Cities, schools, and higher education all receive fundings, but I think we shouldn't lose sight of the community service districts as the state and federal government has kind of ignored.
Yes.
And so I think we need to keep those on the radar. And again, I think we, we, we helped bridge some of their financial gaps, but there may be other opportunities to be able to assist those districts as well.
Good point, Mr. Chair.
Do you have a question?
Yes, I do have Bobby Wortson on the line, and she would like to say a few things aloud.
Very, very good. Thank you. Good morning, Bobby. How are you? Can you hear us? We can't hear you if you're talking. She's unmuted. I also see Natalie online, and I don't know if Natalie wants to talk about the library services. Again, that's another very important link that I would like to see expanded, because many communities, whether they're a city or an unincorporated community, have libraries, and I think they would be an excellent spot for hubs to be able to assist people and whether it's a hotspot, because we don't have the, the, in today's world, McDonald's or Starbucks or some of the other fast food agencies that handle that service. So I think, you know, the library is one of those opportunities.
She's available.
Bobby, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're loud and clear.
Okay, good. Hi, my name is Bobby Wortson, and I'm the executive director for the Kings County Commission on Aging. We're located in Armona. We are available to help KC, KC AO. We can help by serving the seniors here in Kings County. Since the pandemic, we have not only helped serve the seniors, but we've been serving the community. The nonessential workers, they've been coming here and we've been providing services to them. Our agency, we can help alleviate some of the stress by providing services to the seniors during their quarantine. There will be no additional cost, because I already have staff that provide information and assistance, they do outreach. When the pandemic started, we've been purchasing food, medicine, toiletries, water, cleaning supplies, pretty much everything that they need. We also been paying rent, mortgages, and utilities. For the holiday, we purchased pre-cooked meals from Save Mark, because with this pandemic, if, if it hit them hard enough, they weren't able to go cook, so all they had to do is just put the pre-cooked holiday meals in the oven to warm them. We, we've also, we've also been getting some complaints, and this is not any disrespect to anyone. We've have a lot of seniors saying that it's hard to get help. They, they turn away for whatever reason, but we make it easy for them, first of all. We make it easy for them to get the services that they need, and that's what they look for, is to be able to get help and not have to go through a lot of red tape. We, what we do is they, they're required to give us a positive test, we do a one hundred X, and then we also, we're able to refer them to other services that they need. So we go above and beyond to try to get them all the services that they need. I thank you for allowing me this opportunity to share a little bit. Our offices also remain open this whole time during the pandemic. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Bobby. Appreciate all your efforts there out of Armona, so thank you very much. Supervisor Valley?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I, just with the forty thousand dollars that we gave them earlier, I, I can tell you that I received many positive, even phone calls, or people that I've, I've directed toward the commission's way during the pandemic. For that small amount of money, the amount of positive positivities that's come out, come out of their work outweighs some of the things that I've seen with these monies. I mean, even this morning, I don't know if the board's had a chance to look, but I just noticed we have an email here from a, a community member of Armona thanking Ms. Wortson for helping their family out with, who tests positive for COVID, helping out with food, sanitary items. That, that right there is, is just more and goes to show that they're doing a good job with these monies. And so, Mr. Chair, since this is just study session, I would like to see if we could just get to a point where staff can bring back, when they come back to talk about KC AO and putting more money there under the Kings Carriage program, that staff can feel comfortable in bringing back a scope for the board to look at, which would also include Kings County Commission on Aging to receive part of the funding, so they could deal strictly with senior population and KC, KC AO could deal with the age groups below the senior population. That's my hope, to get to save the board more time today, and if, if we can send that message to staff to do that.
Can I say one more thing, please?
No, your time's up, sorry. Go ahead, Bobby.
Okay, we, so far, we've helped a hundred and nineteen people. Plus, we turn in a monthly report to Public Health every month. So these numbers for January is not included.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
If we're cast on this chair, could I just quickly ask for the veterans community, if Scott Howe is on, and if he has any concerns on the negative impacts COVID's had on our, our veterans population in Kings County, and any requested use of the ARPA funds to help with that?
All right. Scott, are you online? I see your name, but.
I am online, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Good morning. Thank you, sir. Yeah, thank you for joining us.
Okay. Supervisor Valley, thank you for recognizing the veterans community and asking that question. We have currently not identified any issues with regard to the types of things that this money could be used for. And the reason I say that is that we have stayed busy here in the office processing clients' claims, either virtually or doing it over the phone. The software provider that, that we use, that software is paid for by Calvet, developed or, or purchased and then implemented some technology that allows us to let the veterans actually sign their claims on their cell phone, their, their electronic device, whatever it might be. The only thing that, that we could possibly need here, and I may be able to deal with that through some increased funding that's coming down from Calvet, is possibly having someone work part-time or get some extra help to get out and do some outreach, particularly in the homeless communities, areas here in, in Kings County, and developing more outreach to be able to get the message out to veterans that we exist here. Because due to COVID, there has currently been many, I would call them boiler rooms that have popped up, that are claiming that they can help veterans get their claims filed, but they're taking money from the veterans and a large amount of it in order to be able to do that. And so if we can get that, that word out, that we are here and, and that we don't cost anything, we don't get paid to do this except, you know, through the general fund in our salaries, then, then that would be a good thing to do. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Scott, and thank you for all of your efforts on, on, on the behavioral health as well as the homeless coalition. So I think you, you're right, as far as the public guardian and, and veteran services, you may not, but as an indirect service, I think that there are many areas that we can enhance their production, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Supervisor Valley. No, thank you, Scott. Mr. Chair, lastly, could I just thank Chef Robinson, not only for his presence here today, but his help. I know he's one of the leaders on our ARPA committee that, that we have. I want to know if there was anyone else from the ARPA committee in the audience?
Dominic.
So Dominic and our HR director. Okay, no, thank you for your work.
And John Devlin.
Okay. All right, thanks, sir. I just want to close on my part by saying, I know your job is to bring us some ideas, but just from my voice, I would hope, and I've talked to the sheriff over the weekend about it, I appreciate his time on it, my concerns, to see more of an element of not just helping the government center, but helping the community. You know, for instance, right now, the major thing, people are trying to get is home test kits. That, I would like to have seen that on the list here today versus some of the, the things that we're seeing today that's just going to benefit the government center and the campus here. Okay, so I want to be open to helping everybody, but on my end, I hope you meet me halfway, because I'll, I'll continue to be vocal for that. I want to see monies going to help the, the human element and the negative impacts on how they've been affected. We've all been affected here in Kings County during this pandemic. Thanks for your time, Mr. Chair.
Good. Thank you. Good discussion, good dialogue. Carry you with you to close.
Yes, your comments are duly noted. The ARPA committee is listening, and we will reconvene and bring back some additional projects in the near future. At this time, this is only a study session, and we will bring an action item next week.
Good. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. That concludes all of the business that we're on, was on the agenda for today. We'll now move to board member announcements or reports on their own activities. Supervisor Fagundes?
Well, this last week, KWR and Housing Authority, everything hit, and there quite a bit of discussion in all of it, and it needs to be dealt with, that's all, the best we can. All the other things we got to do.
Yep. I also want to publicly thank you for sitting in for Supervisor Verboon, who is on a different assignment, and setting in on the association of governments cart and the abandoned vehicle abatement. And so I, I know those were additional roles you don't normally fill, but you, you were present at the meeting and you talked a lot less than Supervisor Verboon, so your attendance is very much appreciated.
You're an acceptable reporter.
I'll give it to you.
I call them the bills in the mail.
Okay, yeah, good.
Check them out there.
You work at these.
Yeah, yeah. Supervisor Verboon?
Thank you. Again, I thank Supervisor for giving us this, sitting on me at the meeting, appreciate that. I traveled out of town for a day and came back, and I did, on Friday, I had a Amtrak seventeen board meeting, spent about two hours, did it on the road. I've done, and then on far as my question to the council, I got on the redistricting part of it, it was required as part of the section five of the Voting Rights Act.
Nineteen sixty-eight.
To get pre-clearance. So when they separate the county, they write it in that section five, right there.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Supervisor Peterson?
Yep. Pretty quiet week last week, but again, just want to remind our seniors, as it was part of a discussion today, that if you make below fifty-five thousand and you need help with your, getting your taxes filed, just see the senior center and they can get you headed in the right direction.
Very good. Thank you. Supervisor Valley?
Yeah, thanks, Joe. I want to thank the board for the time today. We had an important thing to talk about, especially the ARPA study sessions, and I know I can get long-winded sometimes, but I thought it was important, so thanks for hearing that out. And lastly, since it was brought up by one of our firefighters at the podium today, their, their initiative that they have out there, I want to publicly say that I'm supportive of that initiative, the need for it, the funding being dedicated to increase staffing, increase equipment, which will also decrease response times and increase overall efficiency for the safety part of our residents. And so that's something that I want to step out and say that, that I endorse your measures, sir. I think it's fairer than a property tax and putting a penalty on Kings County homeowners, meaning that your sales tax is at the register and that the multitude of people, especially correctional officers, people who live outside of our county and come stop in, get a tank of gas, when they're paying at our registers, that increment, that half cents, will stay in our county here versus just the property owners having to shoulder that load. And so God bless our firefighters who are going through some hard times right now. You've always been there to support us, and I just want to come out and say publicly that I support you on this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good. Thank you. And for me, a little more information, the Kings Waste and Recycling, we did approve Nicole Pena, who's out on medical leave, and upgraded Parvi Sandhu as the new acting executive director in Nicole's absence. We want to wish her well and hope she's able to be able to return shortly. The Kings County Oversight Board approved the recognized obligation payment schedules for the successor agencies. This is a, the outtaking of the closing down of the redevelopment agencies. Lamar Hanford and, Lamar and Hanford have completed their obligations and will probably be going through disbandment, and so that process will be And so that process, it, it will be completed. Avenal and Corcoran still have some time, time to go. And we will continue to operate as an oversight board until that, that is complete. All those actions are complete. At the cart meeting, we surplus some items. We also approved an individual looking for vintage items at the New Transit Center before construction. He's a very knowledgeable individual who will go in and, and research and try to find. He's already done a tremendous amount of research as far as maps and the original locations. And so he already knows where he wants to look and look forward to seeing that unfold. He's been very successful in excavating in other sites. We also approved Angie going to the American Community Transportation America, Association of America Conference in Louisville, Kentucky. And so want to wish her well with that. At the KACAC meeting, we discussed the annual federal obligations report. There's an annual event that happens, as well as approved the Transportation Advisory Council and talking about regional transportation plans and sustainable community. Caltrans reported that the River Bridge in Stratford, the 41, is probably going to be delayed a year due to obtaining permits from the state of California. So that's kind of interesting concept. But, and then the Regional Housing Need Plan is beginning its tenure process as well. And so should you be volunteered for that, just watch your letters and, and be able to do that. This is a tenure plan. And we are starting the process now on the regional housing plan. I don't normally attend the Kings County Abandoned Vehicle, but it was kind of nice to sit in on that. A total of 335 vehicles were abated throughout the county in last fiscal year with an average cost of $340 per vehicle. The program so far this quarter of this fiscal year has abated 43 vehicles. And that is a countywide effort. So I want to certainly thank the Public Works, Community Development, and some of the other operations in the cities that are code enforcement that are making that happen. The Housing Authority had a special meeting and dealt with a couple of items. The State Comptroller's Office Committee meeting on Friday held our first meeting in 2022. We again approved the virtual meeting format. We also discussed the property tax postponement legislation, as well as some cannabis ideas. And I just got the munchies and had to leave. Couldn't stand it. Anyway, they, we continue to work through a lot of the property tax issues dealing between state and counties. Also attended the webinar put on by Enterprise Infrastructure on, on the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. That is a very extensive piece of legislation, 200, 2,702 pages in the federal bill. The focus of this webinar was on the transportation part of the bill, both fixed assets like roads, as well as public transportation and van pooling. And so Enterprise did a real good job of pulling that together. About 20 minutes was spent on roads, 20 minutes on public transportation. West Hills College continues their basketball season. Fans will be allowed for the first time in this calendar year on Saturday when Porterville comes to town. So if you're not doing anything. And then the groundwater sustainability plan review came out on January 28th, as we anticipated. The state wants more information on water quantity, subsidence, and water quality, which are probably three of the big main components of the legislation anyway. And so we'll get a chance to review that and beginning on some of those issues. I, I thought we had 100 days to respond, but looking at the, and either I had it down wrong or it's changed. We'll end up with 180 days. So instead of three months, we'll have six months. And again, we'll have to deal with those three, three main issues. With that, that concludes my presentation. Mr. Hill, you want to talk about board correspondence, upcoming events, and information on future agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your board received a notice of availabili- excuse me, availability to, of initial study with a negative declaration for the Kettleman City Roundabout Project at State Route 41 in Bernard Drive. Also received a meeting notice and agenda for the Central Valley Regional Water Control Board that is taking place Thursday and Friday, February 17th and 18th at 9:00 AM. Also received notice of the California Fish and Game Commission meeting scheduled for February 16th at 9:00 AM and the 17th at 8:30 AM by teleconference. Also received a notice to apply from the Kings County Mosquito Abatement District for upcoming events. We have the Children's Storybook Garden and Museum is hosting the Kids Night Out on Friday, February 11th, Saturday, March 12th, and Friday, April 22nd, from 5:30 to 8:00. Located at 175 East 10th Street in Hanford. The cost is $25 per child for members and $28 per child for non-members. Hanford Chamber of Commerce is hosting a Business After Hours mixer on February 15th from 5:30 to 7:00 at 218 North Doughty Street in Hanford. The Rotary Club of Hanford will be hosting, or excuse me, holding their 44th Annual Crab Feed this Saturday, February 5th, at the Hanford Civic Center at 400 North Doughty Street. The tickets are $100 per person. For upcoming media, meeting agenda items, admin will be bringing the Legislative Platform and the American Rescue Plan Act, as we discussed today in our study sessions. Behavioral Health will be bringing consideration for an agreement to provide veteran services support, group services. Human Services will, consideration of an agreement to provide assistance with Medi-Cal Health Enrollment Navigators Project and an agreement for financial literacy and credit repair services. Elections will be bringing their Voter Choice Act election model. Human Resources will bring the Risk Technician 3 position for consideration. Public Health will of course be bringing the COVID-19 update. And Public Works will be bringing the Kings County Parks opening for consideration and acceptance of the bid for air handlers. I'd also like to take this opportunity to once again thank Behavioral Health and HSA for assisting us with staff up front as we fill some vacancies. Also like to thank Public Works and Library for lending us staff to help us meet our ACA requirements and get the notices out by January 31st.
Very good. Thank you. And then it was brought to my attention, the Knights of Columbus will also be celebrating their centennial this Saturday, the 5th, at St. Rose McCarthy, what do they call it? McEwen? McEwen Hall. And so the Knights of Columbus will also be celebrating 100 years of existence in Kings County. With that, are there any other business to come before the board this morning? Seeing and hearing none, the board will now move into closed session to take up an item regarding La Prino versus Kings County. Counsel, do you anticipate any reporting out? Very good. And the board will adjourn out of closed session to our next regular scheduled meeting on February 8th at 9:00 AM. So with that, thank you very much, everyone. Please have a safe trip, a nice day, and stay healthy. See you next time.